To order, it is August fourteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Gonzalez.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, we will now do our roll call and ask commissioners to state their names and if they have any conflicts.
Commissioner Adam Shin, no conflict.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflict.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Barbie Di Soto, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. I'll read a statement on decorum, just some reminders about protocol, how we keep order in these meetings. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions, unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence also for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the meeting. Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and get started. Our first two items, we're going to go ahead and read in together and they will be presented at once. First, item one, Rachel Dressel requests a conditional use permit for lots not meeting the minimum lot standards per fourteen point twenty one D point zero thirty to build new townhomes in the West Gateway Zone located at ten ten West Center Street Dixon Neighborhood. And also, item two, Rachel Dressel requests project plan approval for a new four-unit townhome development in the W G West Gateway Zone located at ten ten West Center Street Dixon Neighborhood. Dustin Wright will present those for us.
All right, thank you very much. So the applicant is looking to develop this property here. It's currently a vacant parcel that sits there on the corner of Center Street and one thousand West. And as part of the review of this, staff noted that the width of the property didn't meet the requirements of the Gateway Zone that it's in. And so as part of that, there's this conditional use permit, which is item one, that I'll talk about first and then get into item two, so. The width on the property, seventy-three feet wide, and the zone requires ninety feet, as you can see here, so. It's short a little bit on the width required, but the Gateway Zone has a provision in there for prior created lots prior to the zone being in place, kind of a mechanism for those to be able to move forward with development, and so that's the conditional use permit process. So certain requirements kind of outlined in the staff report. I'll kind of just briefly touch on some of those, the applicant needs to try to acquire additional property to try to meet that minimum requirements, they did that, they tried to acquire the property adjacent to it without success. The other is that they can show that they can develop the property according to all the other zone requirements that are in the Gateway Zone without needing any type of a variance or anything like that. So we've got the project plan that we'll look at next, but they have been able to show us that that's feasible, so. And then the other is that it can fit within the within the zone and the surroundings, and so the type of development that they've shown is consistent with those allowed in this zone and shows that that's something that they can do. So staff's recommendation for the first item would be recommending approval with a condition that the that's outlined in the staff report, that a project plan that follows the code is followed and approved. So let's jump into the project plan here, so this is the site plan that they've provided showing how they develop the site. So it's four townhome units right there on the corner. These are going to be each two-bedroom units. They have under, they have garage parking in the back, two cars per unit, and then there's a parking stall on the north side there along the property line to get the nine required parking stalls. And then access to the rear-loaded garages would be from that north side as well through a driveway and then wrapping around to the back to those garages. And the center street there on the bottom of the screen wouldn't be an access point from Center Street. Then here's the landscape plan, so the zone allows for, there's not a minimum lot coverage. And so the structure and then the parking and access to the parking are all encompassing the majority of the site, the remainder of the site's required to be landscaped, which they've shown on the top there, the north side of the property, that's where the parking stall will be, so some of that landscaping just will have to get removed. As part of that, and then here's the elevations on that. The building height maximum allowed in the zone is fifty feet, and this proposed development is forty-two feet in height, so it complies with that. And our design review committee has given a recommendation of approval for the design of the project. Gave them a few suggestions to kind of address the Center Street side where there's that cutout to the back garage area to maybe look at putting up a wing wall or something to kind of address that look a little bit. And then also on the entryways to have a little bit more of a bump out above the the entryway to kind of establish that better as the as the entry, so those were some suggestions from the designer view. So staff's recommending approval on both items one and two, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, any questions from the commission?
I would like to know why we're not measuring the width on the street that it fronts on, it fronts on one thousand West, why aren't we measuring that, because that's plenty wide?
Yeah, so it's ninety feet width and depth, so.
So all both directions have to be ninety, okay.
So I think originally when we're looking at the plan, it was that end unit was trying to face Center Street and at some point.
Okay, I understand. My other question is, isn't there some sort of design guidelines for the corridor and has it, did you say it had already been reviewed by the Center Street Gateway Design Corridor or something? Am I making that up?
Design Review Committee looks at the architecture and the everything, but the design corridor that I think you're asking, that's not in this area.
So there's no design requirements that for it to blend in with anything on that section of the street?
On Center Street or?
Yeah.
So yeah, there's there's design standards that apply to the zone, which they comply with.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't another level of review.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Design Review Committee gave them some suggestions, but.
I have a question. So this design is the one they would have to go with, is that right? When, like, or is that changeable? I forget in what circumstances they can change it still. Does that make sense, like, is what they're presenting in terms of like how it looks and everything? That's exactly how it's going to be?
This is what's been reviewed and and posed, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Is the applicant here tonight to present? Any applicants? Okay, not seeing an applicant, we will go ahead and get open for our public comment. We will now ask those from the public that would like to speak to come forward. When your time is up, you will have two minutes to speak, when your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment, if we have questions, we will invite you to come back at the microphone at the end of the public hearing so that we can ask those questions. This time is for comments only, if you have questions about an item, please speak to the staff privately. We'll invite anyone that would like to make a comment to come forward at this time. And just as a reminder, please state your name and city of residence.
Jeremiah Maun, Mapleton. We built the building just east of this one, and so obviously having lived there for a little while now, because I feel like I live there because I work there now. It would be nice to see some of this, this is obviously a nice tall thing, it'll complement kind of match our building, which will be nice, and and that lot does obviously need some improvements, so it's just nice to see something like this that can go into that area. So yeah, we just, we have no issue with it.
Excellent, thank you.
John Bear, resident there on Ninth West, and my concern is getting another building built like that in the area, while I agree that is nice to clean up the area, my concern is snow removal and garbage. Where are they going to put those? And that becomes a liability for the city trying to clean up the garbage, or if it's going to have a large waste can there, where are they putting that on the property? So those are some concerns.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, we will close the public portion of the meeting. Any discussion from the committee, from the commission?
I would, yeah, I'd be curious to know, the question with with trash collection, do we know how that's going to be, how that's going to be set up and how, you know, yeah. And and snow as well, if that's been thought through?
Yeah, so for trash collection, it's going to be individual cans for each unit that would be pulled out to the curb, so. They could store that in their garage, like a single-family home, and then take it out to the curb and snow removal. Jump back to the site plans, basically at the end of the drive aisle, there's a good spot there behind the landscaped area up there in the top corner where snow could be pushed. Up here, snow could go up there, I would imagine. Like I said, the spot here is going to be a parking space, that landscaping right in that section would go away. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. In that case, is it usually handled by private contract with the snowplow company, or in other words, the units themselves have to take care of that, right?
Yeah, the property owners, I don't know if they're gonna have some type of HOA to accomplish that, or if they'd be individually or collectively working together to do that, but typically an HOA or something could provide those type of services.
Excellent.
I have a few, I don't have questions for you. I have a few concerns with. I I know that it's being recommended by the city, but that back area looks like it will be a series of sharp turns to park in someone's garage, and that worries me a little bit. If indeed it is trash that's collected per unit, where are they going to put their garbage, like, I know we said they can put them in their garage, but I'm pretty sure that the unit closest to Center Street isn't going to wheel it all the way around, so I just see that as like a garage isn't the best storage place for the for the garbage cans. And I think that's kind of because we're trying to smoosh so much in the small space. I also wonder, what are the, I think we had this a few months ago, but when the applicant isn't actually here to answer our questions or to share any information with us, is it smart to say, let's continue this till they're here, or do we just go ahead and make a decision?
If you have questions that you feel like you need to have answered to feel good about making a decision, then you can continue it for the applicant to be here. If you're pretty satisfied with how it's proposed, it's fine to approve it without them. The unit closest to Center Street, I think you would pull the garage, the trash can around the other way, sidewalk and go around the south side of the building.
So that dashed line is not a fence, that's just the property line?
It's just a property line.
Okay. So that's not as big of a deal. I still I just is there somewhere else that we can visualize how sharp of a turn that is for those units, we had, we had an item maybe a year or two ago that came to us that was a flag lot sort of a thing, where they had a project that was very similarly sized with a flag lot driveway that was going back to it, and we said there's not enough room for parking, there's not enough room for people to turn around. And I feel like this this looks very similar to me, and I'm worried that it has the same problems without us realizing that maybe that's why there's this ninety feet of depth that is needed, because you really can't. You know, you can only live here if you drive a smart car, but if you drive a Ford F-150, you'll have to find somewhere else to live, I feel like that's we've got so many parking problems throughout the city, so many people who aren't using their garages for parking, and when I look at this, I say, well, people just won't park there because it'll be too tricky to get in, and then we've got we just said we'll put nine spots out on the street essentially. Because they have to put their garbage can in their garage, too.
Well, like, I see what you're saying, but I don't, I don't know.
You don't think so?
I don't know if we should be building to allow everyone to accommodate a Ford one, F-150 for every single person, like, I don't.
Oh, I don't think so either, I just know that if that's the person who lives there, then we've just pushed two vehicles out onto the street because they'll still come with the vehicles and they won't be able to even get in and maneuver, but maybe I'm just visualizing your own.
I mean, Dustin, doesn't engineering review these turning radiuses and these for, I mean, is that part of their analysis when they when they look at approving the?
Yeah, so the the drive aisle along the back there is the same width that we'd see in like a parking lot, so when you back out of a parking stall in a parking lot, that same width is there, I know it looks tight and it probably will be, but yeah, that's.
It's doable, okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you. For discussion, do we is it I always worry when there's a conditional use permit about what sort of precedent or what sort of leeway we're granting if we say yes.
Isn't this, isn't the conditional use permit the provision in the code to make it possible in these cases? I mean, it pushes us to review it.
It doesn't feel like a weird ask, it feels like a reasonable ask?
I I think so, because like we've seen, infill development can be really, really hard, and this is essentially single-family units, even though, I mean, they are townhomes, but a lot of people want, you know, in certain times of life could really like a townhome, and especially downtown, so I mean, I think I think for me, that kind of trumps those concerns.
Yeah, I would agree, I think it's important that the code was actually like predicting this kind of situation and saying this is what we should do in that case, so. Any other comments, discussion?
I just want to say, I I like the design, I I like that they're going for a sort of brownstone look, it looks like, although I guess we're not talking about the design yet, but yeah, I think this is a good, a good thing to get that, like it is more dense than a lot of things in the area, but it's also not an apartment building either. And there's so much need for housing, I mean, I think it's good.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I appreciate with the design-wise that it feels there's been an elder, an attempt to kind of to give it more of a classical, you know, inspired look, something more, you know, more historical than a lot of new stuff, especially along that that seven street coming into the city area. I think some thoughts I had when I was looking at this earlier, I I guess I'd rather, I would I wish I could have asked the applicant just some design-related thoughts, but as they're not here, I, you know, I don't know, I think that the the back undercut, I I would echo the design review commission that it would be nice if that could, from the street, it does look a little bit odd that there's something missing from the building, but it sounds like the, it looks like that's necessary to make the parking situation work and make the geometry of using that space, so. Yeah, I, that's all I had to say on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if it's because it's in the downtown area, the Gateway Zone, but is there no amenity space required when it's just these four units? Okay.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? Who would like to make a motion on this one? Item one.
I'll make a motion. I'm make a motion on item number one that we approve the requested conditional use permit for Rachel Dressel for the lot in the West Gateway Zone to build new townhomes located at one ten West Center Street Dixon Neighborhood with the following conditions that the property is developed according to an approved project plan.
Any discussion on the motion?
The address is one thousand ten West Center, I think that's obvious, but just in case it matters.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so starting with Commissioner Shin, we'll just do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, so it passes unanimously. Let's go to item two, do we have a motion for item two?
I have two questions. It says in the staff recommendation that a final subdivision plot is approved and recorded. When there's a townhome, do they actually subdivide it into four parcels? Okay. And then the second one is, if if we if we approve this, we never see it again because it's small enough that staff reviews it, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve item number two. Rachel Dressel requests project plan approval for a new four-unit townhome development in the West Gateway Zone located at one thousand ten West Center Street Dixon Neighborhood with the following conditions that a final subdivision plot is approved and recorded.
Any discussion on the motion?
Um, I'll, no, I'll second the motion.
Excellent. So, Mr. Shin?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, so item two passes unanimously as well. Okay, let's move to item three. David Cabanilla requests project plan approval for a new six-story eighty-six-unit apartment building in the DT one general downtown zone located at eighty-eight West five hundred North, North Park Neighborhood. Mr. Wright will also present this item.
All right, thank you. So I'll just note, the original request was for the eighty-six units, and then through the development review process, that's dropped down to eighty-three units, I just want to clarify that moving forward here. So this is the site, that's a vacant site that's been prepared for this development here on the corner of one hundred West and five hundred North. So these eighty-three units will be comprised of sixty-five one-bedroom and eighteen two- and three-bedroom units. Five hundred North will follow our downtown design, streetscape standards, so that's why five hundred North has those pavers and the tree grates and the benches and everything, and then one hundred West, which is our typical standard right-of-way landscaping and everything. Then, so the project's gonna, as far as parking goes, it's going to be structured parking, so the lower level below ground is going to be used for parking, and then above, I guess, so then the next level above is going to have parking on top of that and the building on top of it, but the building Parking on top of that and the building on top of it, but the building is gonna wrap. Uh, around that parking area. So this shows floor plans, uh, levels two through five where the two and. Our one, two and three bedroom units are gonna be located. Uh, and then scattered throughout there is gonna be some of the amenity space, so. In this type of development, there is an amenity space requirement, ten percent of the, uh, residential. Uh, square footage, and so this will have and, or does have that, uh, requirement complied with. And here's a rendering showing the, the exterior that's being proposed. Uh, again, this has been to our design review committee and has received approval for the architecture, the materials being used. See if there's anything else to cover. Yeah, so amenity space, like I mentioned, there's gonna be a business center, gym, clubhouse, and then a rooftop patio. Uh, space provided. So if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have one question with the, the business center. Um, down on the ground floor, could you explain wha, uh, what that, what that means?
Um, yeah, so the business center is just a, I guess, a space there for. Uh, that type of use on the ground floor to help give it that, uh, street presence. Um, wanna make sure that at the ground floor, the, uh, pedestrian. Uh, experiences is inviting and, and not just blank walls. So we have windows and. And doors entering the, the structure and, and going to usable spaces like, like something like that, so.
Isn't your question, is, is it going to be like a d, additional business? Or is it like the office leasing office area for the apartments? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like, is this like a, a space for like, like a, a, like a retailer or restaurant, or is this something just for the apartment unit itself?
Um, that'd be a great question. Maybe we can have the applicant, uh, get a little more detail for us on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question as well. Um, so you said this is making the pedestrian experience good. And I just wanted to see if you could help me identify where, like, is there's access for pedestrians to come out of the building and onto the street? Not just through the parking lot?
Yeah, so if you can see right here on the corner, uh, both of those, uh.
Those doors?
Yeah, right there and there, those are.
And so the stairwell on the floor plans part where it says business center, that stairwell is to get to the apartments?
Unfortunately, you're missing that floor. Is this where you're?
Yes.
Um, yeah, that's, that's gonna get you up to additional levels, so.
Okay.
It looks like there's also a door right adjacent to it that goes out to the street.
Okay.
So this, this shows a little bit better as far as entrances go, so those two I mentioned on the corner here and here. Um, and then each of these units is gonna have a, a patio. Um, door and, and windows. And then this. Um, area here to get into the lobby, that's gonna be an entrance. And then over here on the side is gonna get you back to the. Surface level parking area and, you know, bike amenities and things like that. Um, same thing on one hundred West, you can kind of see where those entrances are there in gray. This shows it better than those others.
So now that I see this with the furnishings, it does look like there are some ground floor units as well, residential units, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Uh, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I have a couple of questions. The dotted line we see on this, the black dotted line, is that the footprint of the building? The one with the arch on the right side or the? The backwards J on the right side?
Over here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, that is. Good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think the, the dark blackout line is the building. Um, so that line could represent the underground parking.
It doesn't match with the underground parking. That one seems to go all the way out, so I was curious what it stood for. Maybe the applicant could tell us when they come up, but my other question before that happens. Um, are there transitional standards, uh, when it's, or is the zone to the north the same zone, the property to the north?
The property to the north is, so, let's jump back, so the property right here to the north. Uh, this is in the downtown zone, so it's in the same zone. Um, but then when you get over back behind here, this is in the RC zone, so there are setbacks standards, uh. Transitional standards for that. And that's why the building has been.
Um, arced the way it is?
Yeah.
Um, it just, I was noticing that we're talking about, what, three or four floors? Six? How many floors were there? I don't remember.
Six, it's six.
Right adjacent to this little house. It will literally be blocked from the sun all winter long, so. I know we're not gonna plan for that house to be there forever. But I was curious if there were any transitional standards, even within the same zone for different uses like that.
Yeah, unfortunately, there is not if it's in the same zone, but that has been something we've been looking at and we'll have to find a good way to address that.
Okay.
Any more questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll now invite the applicant to come forward. Uh, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is, is up, you'll hear a ding, your microphone will be muted. Calling your presentation if we have questions, we'll, we'll ask you at that time.
Thank you, Dave Cabanella, Provo, Utah. Uh, Dave Cabanella, Provo, Utah. Uh, do you have any questions? I think he covered quite a bit of it. I would go back to the, to the, uh, the page. Let's see. One of these is gonna move me forward. There we go. That is actually, the dotted line is the transitional zone. That represents the transitional zone to the north where the, uh, current townhome complex is. And then on the north side, that's the transitional zone. To the property that would be not next to us, but the next following property, which is the townhomes. So this little house is already surrounded on two sides. By a large town, existing townhome complex. We did reach out to them, they did not wanna sell it. And so we, of course, weren't gonna hold up an entire project for one, but it, you know, somebody would like to stay. And so anyway, we moved forward with that to comply with the transitional zone. Um, and the city requirements, so now we're. Where we are, so I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I do have on the design side, our architect. Is with us as well, that could refuel on any of the design, particular design, things that I might not be able to. Uh, answer for.
So if I'm reading this correctly, um.
Not, uh, specifically. Yeah, okay. That, well, actually, that would be the end. I would say I don't really have much more than what Dustin's already, uh, shown you. Other than I can be specific on our unit breakup, you might have had sixty-five one bedrooms. We have fourteen two bedrooms and four three bedrooms. And our, uh, one thing we would, we really are pretty proud of on this one is the way we ended up with a good design is. We have some incredible unobstructed views of Tempanogus, White Mountain. And our top floor and our, all of our east side and northeast, northwest, southwest. It really has laid out really well. Um, and we think we built a good project. We have the, uh, downtown rec center. Then walking distance to our west, the library, of course, is right across the street. And we have Smiths, so it's really, um, at the core of the urban center and core, of course, that's why we're in the DT one zone. So we think we have a lot of advantages there, which is what kind of led us down this particular, uh, design path. So that, that would be about it from my presentation, I guess.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any questions for our applicant?
I have some, I have a question sort of about the breakdown of the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. Um, just kind of what went into the decisions of making them one-bedrooms mostly? What, what goes into your decision-making on that?
Sure, in large part, market decisions, the, the one-bedrooms for downtown urban. Living the one-bedrooms are extremely popular. Uh, they also don't require as much parking as it, as a two-bedroom. Or primarily that ratio of what are, are, we hired an art, a, a, uh. Consultant with us to see what was going on in the market, what's the best mix to do. You know, in relation to your parking required, we're already at great expense underground, so the whole complex is pretty much locked down, so. Gotta get keycoded into the underground, subterranean parking is. Uh, very expensive, uh, but it's also keeps an unsightly parking garage out of the, out of the, out of the project as well. And so we, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom and three-bedroom unit mix, we think, you know, provided us. With the majority of what's going on in the market, but also allowed us, our two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms are quite large. So it's actually allowing us to rent a totally different, uh. Demographic with the elevator access, et cetera.
Every project we've seen in the downtown zones or the ITUD zone have been primarily one-bedrooms. And they, they lease the fastest and they're, 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 there's where the most demand is. I'm sorry if I missed it, but was a answer given to the business center question?
Not yet, no, I was just gonna ask.
I, sorry, I forgot that one because I, I can discuss that.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, yes.
That is for the onsite, uh, management as well as the residents to come use the facilities. Inside the business center. There is no retail business attached, uh.
What are the facilities at the business center for resident use?
Yeah, resident use, just computers, rooms. We actually have quite a few rooms through the floor plans. That, um, we can, if I hit the right button, you can move me forward with some of the floor plans for the different floors. This one? The middle button? There we are. If you look in the center of our project, there's a room right there that has a, uh, uh. Right here, that's can be used as a conference room, someone can rent. We also have interior storage units that the tenants have access to. And then the other one across the way, similar thing, as we go up in floors, we utilize them as. Oops, we're out there. Sorry, I went back wrong. Side, as we go further up, we access these for like yoga rooms, nursery rooms, kids' playrooms. Uh, that's what we're using that actual L portion where we don't have, uh, windows for. So it's just another amenity for our tenants to use. And then the storage is really a big deal when you're talking about. Use, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, there's never enough storage, right? So.
Okay, thank you. Can you go back to the one that had the ground level? Uh, I think one more. That one, yeah. So does the building end where it says ramp down to parking level or does it extend past the gas meters?
Top of that, yeah.
So it goes over the top?
It is over the top of that.
To the gas meters, so what's that setback from the property line?
I think we are. Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay.
Yeah, we go under on the north side, so that, yeah, you go underground on the north side. We do have three entrances, by the way, you were wondering how to get into the building. There's three different places you can get in from the street. By the elevators on the south and then on the staircase to the north.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes.
I have one, are these gonna be for sale?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing, uh, for public comments. Again, please remember that you can make one comment and you'll be limited to two minutes. Please start by stating your name and city of residence. Any comments from the public? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close the public comment session and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Um, I'll, I'll share, uh. Commissioner Jensen's concerned with the, like, how close it is to that home. Uh, on, on the other hand, like, it feels like with the zoning, allowing that, we. It, it's not a reason to say no.
It's unfortunate, but. It's not our purview at this point. And those people didn't come to complain about it either, so maybe they recognize. It's a temporary thing. Um, I really like this. I've been on the commission for several years and. Like, we keep talking about this is the sort of project we're trying to attract to the downtown area. We want a high-density project. Next to the. The UVX station. Next to amenities is very walkable. I think this will be a really cool project. I don't think it will be affordable. I think it will be expensive. But.
That still helps in the long run.
It doesn't seem like much of our demographic is looking, I don't know. Not everybody's looking for cheap housing. Some of them are looking for something nice, so. I think this will be definitely an improvement to that corner.
Yeah, I'd share, I, um, I think we, we didn't get to see, looking at a zoomed out view of the map on this, but. Um, the location, it is right next to the, the Provo Library, which is a great, you know, amenity to have right there. Across the street, you're right around the corner from the UVX station, um, which I think is a great, um. Great way to, uh, just, you know, a, an option for transportation that will. I think hopefully alleviate any issues around, you know, parking, which is a, a common thing that comes up. So I like that it's very close to our, our, the transit stop there, makes, it seems like it makes a lot of sense. Um, I had one question. That I, that came to mind, I forgot to ask earlier, is there any provision for, for bike storage? On this, uh, on, within the apartment plans, maybe for the applicant? Do we have any? Oh, we do, okay. Right there. Okay, 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 thanks.
Bike storage is actually required in Kew.
Excellent, good. Any other comments?
Um, I love this. I think it's great. I, I. I think downtown needs more of this, like we've been saying, you know, and I think, um, I'm really happy with a lot of the way that it looks. I like that there's. Windows on the first level, it has that like transparency and there's entrance, not just via the parking lot, but you can actually walk over somewhere. Um, conveniently and, um. That it's made of brick. I really, I'm so glad the last couple of things have been brick. Um, I know that can be cost prohibitive, but it just is so much more attractive and human scale. So I just think this is very nice and. I, like, I own a house, but if I didn't own a house, I don't know. I feel like each time we get a really good product, I'm like, I wanna live there. Um, and I hope that this also shows, I hope that the, the larger ones for small families, perhaps. Young families, um, become occupied, become in demand and, and that, that will show a demand for this kind of thing. It's like, I would love to live across the street from the library and the rec center, like. I have two little kids and I think that would be amazing. And so I hope that, hope that there's people who, who want. Um, to take advantage of that and that that will sort of. Become more normalized and not seen as like city living is like less than suburban living, um, cause I think this is wonderful.
I think the elementary schools in walking distance as well, just past the rec center. Um, I too really like the, the design of it. I think it's great. Um, I do note, I, I share the concern about the proximity to the next lot, but two things come to mind. One. At least the building's pretty narrow there. And so it's only gonna shade during a short portion of the middle of the day, otherwise the sun's coming at side angles. Um, also, it's just a sequencing issue. This is an area where we expect higher density to be built, and if we prevented. Close setbacks, then we would never get it and it would just stall the entire thing if everything had to be done at once, right? And so I think it's something that we just have to say is gonna go forward because we expect the rest of the area to start to match in the future. Um, as well. Any other comments? Okay, are we ready for our motion?
I'll make a motion. If someone wants to get the door. Um, I. Do you recognize my motion? Is that okay if I make a motion? Okay, um, I make a motion that we approve item number three. David Cabanella, Cavania requests project plan approval for a six-story eighty-six, eighty-three unit apartment building. In the general downtown zone located at eighty-eight West five hundred North in the North Park Neighborhood. Um, with the condition that a final subdivision plot is approved and recorded.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
And we'll start with Mr. Shin.
I.
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 And I vote I, so the motion passes unanimously. Let's move to item four. Cal Johnson requ- Cal Johnson requests project plan approval for redevelopment plan to demolish an existing commercial building and build a new multi-tenant commercial building in the CG general commercial zone located at twelve hundred North University Avenue, Carterville neighborhood. Um Nancy Robinson will prevent, present that for us.
Hello. So um this is where currently um Costa Vida and uh I'm trying to just forward it to the next thing, but maybe my, here we go. I don't know if the clicker is working, but we'll see. Here we go. If, if certain people can use the clicker correctly. Okay, so this is where it currently is. Um the current building is approximately twenty-five thousand square feet. Um they would like to demolish that and then they are only requesting to build a um approximately sixty-seven hundred square foot building. Costa Vida is the only business that would return, but there would be a couple of other um spaces, um businesses that would, could uh be in the building. Costa Vida would have a drive-through. Um they, the number of required parking spaces is sixty-seven, but they've got seventy stalls. And for bicycle spaces, I think that staff thinks that this would be a good improvement for that area with all the other um surrounding businesses. The fact that they're creating a much larger parking area as opposed to a, a really big building. So this is, the elevations, it was reviewed by the design review committee and they um liked the design um and gave it approval and um guess we also had uh the landscaping. So that's the landscaping plan for it. But staff would recommend approval for the planning commission um and that they can move forward with the um permit for demolish and then building permit. And I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Um one of the conditions for approval is that all remaining CRC comments are resolved. And when I was looking through the CRC comments, it looked like there's just someone saying, I don't like the kind of tree you chose.
I know.
Is that the only one we're talking about?
Well, yeah, and that if in the permitting process, anything else comes up that.
I was like, cause that's not even a, that's not even a deal breaker. He just was like, that's a garbage.
That was just like, just saying, hey, these kind of trees are better than these. So, yeah.
Please go ahead.
With this having a drive-through, it doesn't, shouldn't, doesn't it have a conditional use permit attached with it? Or is it because there's no change in use or?
Some zones do, uh some of the uh SC one zones, but this one does not.
And they've got enough space of what is required. They've got more space than is required. They um, see, I think it shows.
Yeah, the, that was the second part of my question or comment, just being with the stacking um to the drive-through with this coming off University Avenue um. You know, I've seen other drive-throughs uh uh come to mind like uh that have access from, from University Avenue where at some of their peak hours, they're stalling traffic on University Avenue. Um Dutch Brothers comes to mind. Um there's a soda place on like two hundred north and, and university um.
And it's really close to the light here. Where it's like a double yellow, but people will turn left into here.
Are there, are there, are there any, is there a possibility um they could change where their unit drive-through is to where it's allows for more stacking where that just never becomes a problem?
Yeah, for example, I was wondering why it didn't wrap around the back. Right? And then come forward and you can exit it out the front and it's easy. Any thoughts there? Maybe that would be for the applicant.
Or maybe we could ask the applicant that. Yeah. Anyways, the, I guess it's more of a comment than a question.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Any other questions?
Uh I, yeah, I have one question. I've um, yeah, I've, I've been down around that area and it looks like like driving around looking on, on the map. Um is this the current building, the Fat Cats building?
Yes.
Uh and this is, is it connected to the other existing buildings that are south to, uh south of it? Is it touching?
No.
Okay. It's close though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's not actually connected.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll now invite the applicant to come forward. Once again, you'll have fifteen minutes to make your presentation. Um and then we'll take any, we'll ask you any questions that we may have.
Mr. Shin, I think the drawing shows the existing buildings to the south. Those shaded areas are the existing buildings to the south.
Okay, thank you.
I'm uh Cal Johnson, the applicant. And um I think Nancy did a great job presenting. I can answer some of your questions and concerns um on the drive-through. That is something that we went over um with engineering. And so we even had a, a traffic study done and a queuing analysis done on this drive-through and the configuration. Costa Vida does a great job at getting their cars through the lane. And so they saw in their newest store, they saw a maximum queue at the peak hour of seven vehicles. And this fits ten. So we're already beyond the maximum queue at their newest store here in Utah. And then beyond that, if there were to be an issue, we have this uh pull-forward area where they could pull forward and move cars out of the way and still continue to move cars through that.
Yeah. Are, are those, are those stalls gonna be marked like a queue, like?
Like these, these stalls to the south?
Right.
Yeah, so primarily those would be pull-forward and employee parking. Make that, make that easier. Um as far as, you know, other things that I would add to what uh Ms. Robbins, Robinson um said, we're really excited that we're kind of going the opposite of the norm. We're decreasing the building size and making sure that we've got enough parking. Uh I know that's not uh, that's not usual for projects that come forward to cities. It's usually, hey, I'm gonna max out the building and we're gonna try to get it, some allowances on parking. So we're excited that we're able to provide uh all the parking that we're gonna need, make it flow a whole lot better than it does right now. Um and then the uh, the front edge along university is gonna be improved drastically. Um that landscape is, is gorgeous and uh that whole um University Avenue facing facade is, is a great look um for the area. We're really excited to present this project.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I apologize. I started asking questions before we even got to that.
Yeah, do you have a presentation or is that, are you just happy to answer questions?
Yep.
I have some.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, on the, this site plan, on the north side, there are those two, it looks like maybe they're landscaping bur- strips or curb strips or something. And I'm wondering if you can tell me what they are because if they are, have any height to them, then those parking spots are effectively blocked.
Are you talking the ones just?
Above the handicap spots?
Yeah, so those are just valley gutters. Those are old gutters to collect stormwater.
And I think that was a, I'm excited to see a much nicer looking parking lot because I was just there the other day and I was surprised at how much parking belongs to you guys, like all the way over by that um insurance building or on the northeast corner.
Right.
And to have that not just be the smell of dumpster and gravel, that would be nice.
I have a question. And Fat Cats just, are they, they just don't wanna be there anymore or was it not a good business?
Yeah, I, maybe Brian, you can answer that one.
Yeah, Fat Cats, um my name is Brian Collins, by the way, I live in Heber. Um we have sold off all of our legacy centers, what we call them. Has anyone been to the Saratoga Springs Fat Cats? We do all the new, they're all movie theaters and are much bigger buildings. So our, our regular prototype is a sixty-three thousand square foot, eight movie theater with all of the, just more entertainment. So Salt Lake, Ogden, Provo are the original legacy centers. So we're closing those ones and then building the new. So we will be doing a new Fat Cats, uh most likely in PG, maybe one in Springville, but this site isn't big enough for that.
It's too bad.
Yeah.
That was a blunt thing, actually.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll now open the public comment portion of the meeting. Just as a reminder, you'll have two minutes to speak. Um and please start by stating your name and your city of residence. So we'll now invite any, anyone from the public to come forward.
My name is Bruce Earl. I live in Lyndon. Um my uh company, Earl Corporation owns the property to the north. I don't see an elevation here. Uh what does it look like? Second, um we have a drive-through and as well uh on, on Hurst that goes to Rancheritos. And we have had a lot of problems with Fat Cats and uh with them parking in our parking lot. So I just wanna know how we can solve that problem so that they don't keep coming, cause it's faster, they can park closer to where Costa Vida is. Well, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Um just to address one concern, these are the elevations right here um that are up on the screen. And so it's about, I think, the same height as the existing building. Is that correct? Um but a smaller footprint, more parking. Maybe if the applicant, could you tell us how many more parking spots you have than you did previous, previously?
That is actually a good question. I don't know that I have off the top, how many stalls there are currently. I know that our parking ratio went up significantly, but I don't know that I have an exact count. If you're uh willing to wait for a second, I could probably get it.
I'd also like to point out that it wouldn't need as much parking because the bowling alley probably has a higher parking requirement. And the question.
Depends what comes in, right? We don't know what that is yet.
Yeah. The question is, um the additional question I have, maybe that would help the, this gentleman's question is, is the footprint, the northern boundary of your, of your property or if your building, is that the same place that it is right now or is it gonna actually be further south than it is right now? So that he can get an idea of, of how much space is between two buildings, maybe?
Right. So it's actually further south than the existing building.
So it won't be such a tight alleyway between the two?
It's not as tight anymore. We, we got quite a few more feet there. Um one, we wanted to get, make sure that instead of angled parking up there, we got perpendicular parking. And then that we have a full width driveline on that north side rather than kind of that, you know, sixteen, seventeen foot width that's there. So uh the proposed building is shifted quite a bit south um away from that property line. It looks like there's I'd estimate you're, you're looking at between fifty and sixty stalls and we're up at uh seventy with our proposal, if I remember it. So we're an increase of ten to twenty stalls with a decrease in demand.
It, wha- wha- what exactly? What if any delineation is there between the the property to the north and, and this property? Um and is there, ha- has there been in the past any shared parking agreements or um? Yeah, how to address that with tracking who parks where? Cause I think a lot of the people, when they go to that shopping area, they just.
There's just signs everywhere that.
I mean, you either blow off the signs and park wherever or you oh bam and park appropriately.
So uh some of the delineation, there's a few curb, small curb islands between the two properties.
How, how high?
They're six inch height and then they're probably the, there's a really short one that's only like four feet long. And then there's about a twelve foot and then a twenty-five foot and there's kind of gaps in between them. Um that kind of delineates the two properties. I'm not aware of any shared parking agreement between the two properties, which is probably why it's all signed, hey, parking for this place only and parking for this place only. Um I know that that can be a concern. I think that what we're proposing helps alleviate that. But no matter what any of us do, there are still gonna be people that will disregard a sign and park wherever they want. And that kind of goes across anywhere in the city. Um
Well, I, I see on this image here, um the one we have in our, the site plan we have in our staff report shows there's an additional twenty-four feet between the drive-through area of the business to the north and where the parking stalls start. So that is twenty-four extra feet, cause well probably ten extra feet.
So right now it's about fifteen to seventeen feet.
So that's a little bit more space. And I, I don't know if this is out of line, but I would recommend that since we have a Fat Cats representative and the owner of the business to the north in the same room, I would encourage you guys to swap numbers so that you can talk to each other as this, this project goes forward so that you can have a positive start to the new business relationship. That's I can't legislate that, but I would recommend that as a kumbaya gesture.
Excellent. Well, we have the applicant back up. Are there any further questions for him? If not, thank you. Okay, any other comments about the um topic?
I think it's sad to lose an amenity like this in the city, but clearly it's not getting used enough that it's profitable and I'm excited to see an upgrade. It'll be nice. I'm okay with it.
I would share, I, I, I think um, yeah, it is, I, I remember, I went to Fat Cats, I think, once years ago. But yeah, it is, it is unfortunate that uh you know, something has to go. Um I guess my, my thought, I used to live just a little, uh when I was in college, I lived just north a few blocks of that area. So I've been, you know, I, I've spent some time around there and I, I used to walk around and, and do stuff. Um I appreciate the care that was given to um providing enough parking. I do wonder a little bit though, you know, this may be more of a comment than a, a direct, you know, like a but I, I wonder about just with that being such a, a piece of property that's very close to to the university, it's very close to a whole bunch of like the, the dorms, the student housing that, that is right there already. Um being right off Cougar Boulevard with the, the dedicated bike lanes um and just, and the proximity, you know, I know that, you know, uh drive-throughs are, you know, they become people, people like drive-throughs and they're, you know, they, they keep getting built, obviously. Um but every, you know, every additional parking spot that gets built there is another car trip as well that will be, you know, induced by having a drive, you know. Yeah, I, I live now up near like the, the state street where there's like that Chick-fil-A in Orem. If you guys know the Chick-fil-A in Orem, you know, there's a, a Korean restaurant that my wife and I like to go to and we, it's, it's very hard to get through because there's the, the Chick-fil-A drive-through is always packed. Um so that's, that's an anecdote, you know, but it's, it's one of the things I, I wonder just with you know, is that, is that really the, is that the best use of land to be going up right next to the university there? And if it is, maybe, you know, are we, should we think about how we're incentivizing, you know, do we want to incentivize more drive-throughs in that kind of area? Cause I, I, I feel like for myself, I would, I would love to see something more oriented towards, you know, students where they can get around without having to create more traffic going through that area near the university and up and down university avenue, so.
I totally agree. I was thinking the same thing that um I guess a couple of things about this in terms of direction, it is more general, cause I know this is, you know, okay for the zone and everything, but yeah, to dedicate mm, space in this particular spot for something so, it's not just that there it's like very car-centric, but it's also like really hard to get anywhere. Like if you're on the sidewalk, you have to walk through the parking lot to get to these places. So they're very, very much built for cars. And this is also a really difficult block to get in and out of. And then one thing I really wish that there could be a universal solution to is this idea of um making the parking lot just for one business and then this spot, these spots, but and then they like put cement barriers and so you can't, if you go into the wrong one, then you have to drive around to the other one. And then on this block, it's a triangle, so you have to go all the way around unless you want, cause you can't turn left. You know, it, it is, it's a ton more driving even for that reason. So um I do think overall this it's unfortunate that. this is the kind of thing that is right smack in the middle of some of the more dense, more densifiable areas of the city, where we have a lot of potential for something different and something, yeah, more hu- human-centered.
Yes, please.
Um, that makes me think about things we've talked about before, making um our parking lots pedestrian-friendly. And so that is something to consider where we've got adjacent uses that um are essentially backing into each other's space. If we've got people walking over from campus, I can't tell if that's the, just to the west of the north driveway, is that a sidewalk that's going through there? Rachel disappeared. It's on page three of our staff report. It looks like maybe there's a sidewalk there, but then there's nothing that gives pedestrians a safe place to walk. That may be something that we consider in-
They're required by ADA to have a, a clear path from the sidewalk to the property, right?
Bill's trying to end the meeting by going to the last island.
I, I just, for what it's worth, Daniel, I noticed that I parked across this, across the island, and the sidewalk ends where the ADA parking ends, and I walked on the dirt cuz there's no sidewalk in front of that, so if that's the only standard, then-
Oh, no, that's a landscaping strip. So just having discussed this a little bit, I just, I feel like that is something to consider. It's okay if they, if the owner wants to make it car-centric, and they think that economically it's feasible for them. Um, I guess that's their decision, but that having been said, we also need to make it pedestrian-friendly. Um, or even just from people who have to park in the northeast corner to get to the entrance to the building. That's something to consider as far as safety getting across all those stalls.
Uh, I have a comment, I guess, towards staff and, and uh, I've noticed that some other cities have um, they'll require drive-through queues to be off the the main front of the road, they'll to put them around the back or to the side or whatever. Um, maybe something the planning commission or staff might want to revisit or relook at. Um, taking the queues away from uh, street-facing traffic.
That's something that's important to account, the planning commission. I think we should do a study session on it, cuz now's the time to make changes like that when we're writing a new zoning ordinance, or in the midst of writing a new ordinance, so we ought to get those kinds of things into that. You know, there's always discussions about parking, and one of the things we've asked the consultant to do is that they take a hard look at our fourteen thirty-seven parking ordinance that to me, there are certain land uses that I believe are overparked, and to compare those to other cities and see places where they could be reduced. But that's a good topic to bring up and discuss while we're doing the rewrite, if it's interesting to the planning commission.
I would um, really like to see that. Um, the first thing I thought when I saw this, this is unfortunate that from the street, what you see is two lanes of cars in a, in a drive-through um, instead of the building itself, right? If the building was much closer to university, I think it would help walkability. Um, it would give more room if the cars were going around back somehow. Now, I did realize that they have to go this direction because the driver's on the left side of the car. Um, so you can't go around the building the other way, or you get the wrong side of the car facing the building. Um, so that creates a challenge, especially in a, a lot kinda like this, right, where it's kinda cramped in with other buildings. Um, but perhaps it would've been interesting if there were, the entrance got moved, got moved farther away from the intersection down towards Starbucks there. Um, and then tried to wrap around the back for a drive-through or something, but it's an interesting dilemma, cuz I get it, I get the drive-throughs are necessary uh, from a business point of view, uh, and we want businesses to be viable in our city, right? Um, but it's almost gonna hide the building because it's all in front.
We have to remember too, that there's two other um potential tenants in here, so the whole thing is not Costa Vida. And I'm wondering, is, it's hard to tell from this footprint, but is Costa Vida just the furthest west one that doesn't have a full dividing line? It, or is it where the, the full dividing line is? So we're thinking that, so he said it's just at the halfway line. So the, the area on the east side is the potential for two more units. So Costa Vida will be half the building, and then the other one could be split. Okay. So there'll be, there'll be plenty of indoor seating as well for Costa Vida. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like it is it's just like a really terrible place to have the entrance from university, I feel like, cuz it's always so crowded and people are I don't know, it's, it's kind of, it's a really awkward-shaped block to work with, I know, but this is the kind of place that I try to avoid.
Well, I'm wondering if, if we take some of this feedback and um I don't know if we even, we're not even, are we approving this plan? Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Um, if we had them come in in that awkward by Bock Bock that comes off of Canyon Road, is it still called Bock Bock? The chicken place? That's on the, anyway, the existing building there, you can see on this map, there's the in-out arrows on the, the bottom right corner of, of where it comes in from Canyon Road. And if you had the drive-through on the north side of the building so that your drive-through was running parallel to the, the restaurant to the north's drive-through, so both of you are having your drive-throughs. Um, and then you could have parking on both sides of the south side, which would compensate for the parking. So it would just be like move the building up, you don't lose, you could still have your two lanes of of drive-through, but it's not ever gonna back out onto University Avenue or back up on the University Avenue. And you get your building to be closer to university so that it's not blocked by traffic, but it actually is visible. That's just a thought of how we can address some of these concerns that we've it kind of addresses pedestrian safety, cuz now everybody can enter on the south side where there's no drive-through traffic going past.
Mm-hmm.
But it does flip-flop everything.
Could also move the building closer to the road, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, to the west, absolutely. Anyway.
So what would be the procedure if we wanted to raise those concerns? Anyone know? Bill?
I, I think those are good concerns to raise in terms of changes we should make in the ordinance going forward, but because this meets our code, I don't know if the planning commission can um, insist on a different design when this meets our ordinance.
Yeah.
I, I think you're raising really good issues, but I, I think they're ones that we need to get into.
So in the project plan review that we have the purview over right now, we can't say, because this is a, a situational conflict with the way the lot is and where it's related to, we don't have any right to say please do it differently.
You have every right to say, please do it differently, you just don't have the right to say
We're denying it because of that.
You do it differently.
Uh, that's why I was saying, if this was a conditional use permit, we could've uh said, no, this is a, is y- you need to address these things as part of the condition, but I don't, we don't even have that option, I, I think with this, uh, with the zoning. Otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I, yeah, I'll just make a call, I I think it's unfortunate to see them go, uh, because I think that leaves Provo with no bright uh, public, some public, non-private bowling alley.
Do people bowl anymore?
I, I do.
I don't bowl.
Kids love it.
Um, but uh, but I, this isn't our, that's not our, that's not the scope of our, our inquiry or authority, but um go to East Bay. No, um, yeah.
Yeah, we're only gonna approve you if you promise to build fat cats down by the mall. As part of an economic uh revitalization zone.
She's kidding.
Just kidding, I have the record.
Okay, are we ready for a motion then?
I just, I'd add the comment before we go on, if we're, if we have the right to say, if, if, if our purview is to say, we wish you would do it differently, I think it's worth expressing that we, you know, are, I, I like to express my thought, I, I, I think there's some good ideas brought up there about how the drive-through could maybe be routed better. Um, I just, I imagine people coming up, you know, walking up uh north on University Avenue, trying to get in, having to cross, walk across the drive-through lanes or bike across, you know? And same thing from the, the dorms on the, um, on the north, uh, I, I, I think people are gonna want to walk in and kinda have to be forced to go through to go walk through a parking lot that doesn't really look like it has much provision for being able to bike through, to walk through. Um, I, I think it's worth, if we do have the chance to re uh revisit this in future zone changes, I think that would be something to talk about, yeah, like how we can, how we could improve that for next times this kinda thing comes around.
Bill, remind me, um, there are requirements for pedestrian access through parking lots in this zone, or no? There are none? Okay, I know we talked about it in like the gateway, when we were discussing gateway design standards, and so I wasn't sure if it was written anywhere. Okay, well then I-
But it's, you've raised several really good issues that I think we should follow up on, uh, the issue about reciprocal vehicular access, so you're not driving around the block, and you let's get to the next business. You, you raised several issues that we need to talk more about.
Okay.
For projects going forward.
So I would also just give you that friendly, consider pedestrian safety um, in however your final design looks, because I think these are, even though the, the ordinance doesn't require it, I think it would be wise to have it, so.
Yeah, yeah, especially I would, uh, whether it's through, uh, like a, something very delineated for, from the sidewalk to uh, to the building, crossing the, the drive-through lanes, it doesn't it doesn't feel delineated enough.
Let me give you a, a good example of a bad example. I was at the Provo Airport last week, and um if you've been out there, they have the original paved parking lot, and then they've got the gravel area that they realized they needed more parking. And there's nothing from the gravel area to the paved area that, that provides an access for pedestrian, you just sort of walk across. Now, it's not a high-speed thoroughfare, and there's nobody queuing up in a drive-through or whatever, but um, I did notice that the, the natural flow of traffic for me was to walk between the cars, and then I got to a sidewalk um, that wasn't the natural flow of traffic, it like dead-ended somewhere. And as I was coming out, you walk down the sidewalk, and in order to get to the gravel area, you have to walk over a curb, there's no more ADA anything. So it's possible by just making yellow stripe hash, hash marks on the road, or to actually consider where your curb cuts and your landscaping are, to make some logical, some logical um things that that guide people in, and especially if you've got possibly two other businesses in there that people are walking to, you're gonna want you're gonna want your access to be easy and, and pedestrian-friendly. So that doesn't dead-end somewhere where you have to then walk around through the drive-through lane to get somewhere.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I'm gonna go down in history as the one who killed fat cats. I feel like this is a very important moment for me. All right, um, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number four. There are a project, or that we approve this project plan for a redevelopment plan to demolish an existing commercial building and build a new multi-tenant commercial building in the general commercial zone located at twelve hundred North University Avenue in the Cardville neighborhood. Um, with the condition that any remaining CRC comments are resolved prior to any building permit approval.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, Mr. Shin.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. Okay, with nine items, I kind of expected that we would need a break. The next two are related. So do we need a break now, or should we push through item six and then take a break?
I'm good going.
Good going? Okay. Let's push forward then. Item five, now the next two are related, but I'm told I need to read these in separately cuz they have two separate presentations. Item five, Scott Dosher requests approval for a zone map amendment from the A one point five agricultural zone to R one point eight one-family residential zone in order to create a two-lot residential subdivision located at four hundred and eighty-four north, two thousand seven hundred and sixty west Lakeview South neighborhood. Um, and Mary Barnes is going to present that for us.
Thank you. All right, so um, basic issue here is that the, um, the property owner for the property shown in here, I'll skip to this one, um, for that property shown outlined in red, here's just a, just a context map of the area, it's on the west side. Anyways, the property owner for that property wants to subdivide his property into two separate properties with a simple two-lot subdivision. There's some leftover strange zoning on the parcel, you can see it doesn't really follow any property lines, it's at A one point five zoning. Um, that zoning, A one point five, the minimum required lot size is five acres. That entire lot is like just over one point five, I believe. Yeah, just over one point five acres, so it's already technically non-conforming. Anyways, like I said, this is probably just a remnant zoning of, you know, zoning in the past. So this zoning amendment is simply to change it to match all of the um properties surrounding it to a simple R one eight zoning, um, specifically so that the applicant can subdivide his property into two lots. Um, it will be a flag lot and, you know, just like a traditional lot up the front. Lot one is forty-eight thousand square feet, lot two is eighteen thousand square feet, so they by far meet lot area requirements. Not that you're, you know, approving a subdivision here, but just so there's some context there, and with this subdivision, the um, right now, the sidewalk doesn't quite continue, you know, it stops at the north end on twenty-six seventy west, and then it starts to get on the south end, so that will um punch through and you know, be a complete sidewalk for the residents in the neighborhood. Um, the future plan for this is, well, the only um residential housing type permitted here is a single-family home, so it will just be another single-family home on lot two. Any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Barnes, um, I noticed the existing building already has access to twenty-seven sixty west, it looks like, kind of an inlet there. So is there a particular reason why they're suggesting a flag lot in this particular place?
Great question, so um, city code says that every every building lot has to have access from a public street, and it has to have twenty feet of access specifically for um emergency vehicles, maybe uh, at least twenty feet of access, that's why flag lot requirement is at least twenty feet, that's what the like flagpole driveway area requirement is. Um, that access off of twenty-seven sixty west is historical, but if you notice, it's actually on someone else's property. So there's probably some type of use easement or agreement between those two property owners that has just continued. But with this new subdivision, they'll have to build their own driveway back there. They're bringing it into conformance, this is clearly an old agricultural lot. Not sure, again, weird zoning, weird access, so this will hopefully clean up everything.
I'm just wondering how you even connect that driveway, though, because the doors on the building appear to be on the opposite side.
Mm-hmm, it's a great question, and there's also, if you notice, there's some accessory buildings in what would now be the front yard on the
Yeah.
east, yeah, east side, so applicant will be taking those accessory buildings down, and I'm not, I'm not quite sure, maybe the applicant can come and talk about how to connect that over to the other side. Um, I would imagine some type of driveway um, on the north to get to the garage on the west side.
I mean, do we know if these garages are even staying? They might be getting replaced.
That's a good, that's another good, great question for the applicant. Not sure what his future plans are for his property, that lot one.
Any other questions?
Oh, I, I have one question, with the, the, the driveway for lot one, little flag, flagpole piece, uh, is that, is that then twenty feet width to get that twenty feet of uh frontage on the, on twenty, twenty-six seventy west?
I can't remember the exact requirement, but we're, it's required to have twenty feet of frontage, but I think the driveway, it doesn't have to be all driveway. It's like a twelve feet of paved driveway, but it just needs that twenty-foot access.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I think I have, I don't want to go into item six, but I can't help it. So I'm, I'm gonna bring it up here. I, I think in, in item number six, it notes that there's no concept provided for this singular home. I mean, so the, the concept plan is approving the two-lot subdivision. But we're not contemplating the buildings on it.
So.
And so it feels like when we go into item five, you know, when we approve the zone. I don't know, it feels a little bit.
I should.
I have concerns with that, that access, because in my head, it means, I, I look at it and I'm saying, well, they're not going to use the flag drive. They may not even develop the flag drive. Maybe they'll still access it from 2760.
I can.
I'm sure the applicant can clarify, but my understanding has been that one of the reasons to do this is to eliminate the access on 2760.
Um, I think, again, so the property owner to the west has not. Isn't doing anything with his property at this point in time. But one of the comments that engineering has told the applicant that they will have on the subdivision plat when that is submitted after this process. Is that they'll want some type of small easement for an eventual cul-de-sac at the bottom. Of 2760 West, just on the corner where it could encroach a little into the applicant's property. Just planning for the future, if the neighbor to the west ever does want to. Do something, then there'll be that extra room for a possible cul-de-sac.
Wouldn't that also then give the access to that side of the lot without the flag being necessary?
Eventually, and that might be a good thing.
Eventually, yeah, and it could be a good thing.
But we have to remember that lot one could probably be subdivided into three or four more lots at one point, because so you would want access from both sides.
Yeah, 48,000 square feet in R18 allows a minimum 8,000 square foot lots.
So it could be six if there was actually enough room.
Would, yeah. Again, everything has to be accessed off of a public street, so it really comes to that. Maybe there's going to be more flag lots in the future, something like that.
So that's why the flag lot doesn't bug me, because I'm looking towards the eventuality that. At least will be divided in half and one would be on the west and one would be that flag lot on the right.
So I mean, I guess I look at it a little bit differently, same concern, but when I look at that lot to the west and the street coming in from above. I tend to think you could almost put, you know, a T there and house many houses and not have to have the flag lot. And it just feels like we're putting something in that's never the ideal situation. There's also that kind of little weird cutout. On the north side, right, where it's, if you look up in the top right corner, that's going to end up being awkward at some point. And it's just not looking to what development might look like in the future.
Can I, aren't we just cleaning up the zoning, though, so that they have options? I, I just think it's not.
Yeah, this isn't the subdivision. It is a, completely agree, it's a strangely shaped lot, but. That's not.
So if we, if we clean up the zoning, then there are lots of options. And that's why I don't think there's a specific plan, because they're probably going to sit on this and wait and see what can be done later. But by cleaning this up, we make, we've set this first step forward for something to happen.
However, there is item six, which is for the concept plan approval, and usually we get a concept plan approval because it gives us an idea of what could happen with the zone change. Now, in this particular case, I feel like the zone change is a cleanup, like Melissa was saying, so it's not. It's not as pertinent, it's not as interrelated with it, because I feel like it should be done anyway. But I, I, I think when we get to item six, we're, we're gonna maybe have some questions about.
Concerns.
What, why we're hearing it as a concept plan if it's not maybe what's ideal.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm starting to feel more comfortable with the zone change, because I, I think. You know, whatever, like, we, we only have what's in front of us. And, and we're anticipating maybe future things and, and maybe the, the property owner doesn't have those plans at all. And, and so.
Yeah.
But if they do, they're gonna have to make it conform to the R18.
So let's go ahead and maybe hear from the applicant, do the public comments, and then we can come back and continue this discussion. Thank you. Invite the applicant forward. We'll be given 15 minutes for your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Scott Dosher. I'm a civil engineer with Atwell, representing Mr. Sidro Zaragoza, who is also here and is the owner of the property. I'd like to say at the outset, we've had a tremendous amount of help from staff. This is an unusually shaped lot. And to figure out how to subdivide it was difficult. We've, both Dustin and Mary have also given us some creative ideas of how to actually do it that we had not thought of. So we appreciate very much their participation, and that has allowed us to get to this application. I've heard some great questions this evening. Some of those are more related to the concept plan, but let me just address one of those. My understanding for the reason we were required to do a concept plan had more to do with engineering issues than the shape of the lot. Because we will, we have already submitted a final plat application. So that the configuration of the lot and the flag lot are being addressed. We've already received one round of comments on those. The items that we understand generated the need for a concept plan were things like. The sanitary sewer system. The existing house is on septic. So we are proposing at the appropriate time to take that offline and connect to the city sanitary system. That was, I, that was one of the main items. There's also a drainage pipe that the. The lot drains into on the south side and we, staff wanted to have some discussion about that. So my understanding is that the concept plan was generated more from a need for engineering discussion. So this, I agree with Mary that this is more of a rezoning question at this point, at least for this item. Historically, we don't really know how this was not re-zoned from agricultural with everything else, but. Things happen historically over time and we would like this to conform to the rest of the neighborhood and. Be consistent within the parcel, which would give us some options. You asked about access. The flag lot was one of the solutions that we. With the help of staff came up with in order to subdivide the property, and it is a requirement. To do it this way because we do not have a right-of-way connection to 2760 West. We have a historical driveway there, but there's no right-of-way connection. So we have to do the flag lot. The, the property actually has a current access driveway to 2670 West. There's a, there's a gate there. You can't see it here, but right there where it says 2670 West, there's actually a gate. That allows access to the property from the east. We don't, the applicant or the owner is not sure what he would like to do long-term with the property. But we don't see a reason necessarily at this point to cut off driveway access to 2760 West, which is historical. But we do have to do the flag lot in order to move forward with the subdivision.
So the flag lot is a requirement of the staff to meet zoning ordinance requirements because you don't have a dedicated access from 2760.
Correct. We don't have a connection directly to a right-of-way.
Right.
So we have to.
Using 2760, so I was incorrect when I stated earlier, you do tend to keep using 2760.
We, we don't, the owner does not have a plan to change that at this point.
Okay.
Could he do that in the future? All the scenarios that were discussed as far as. A cul-de-sac could be considered in the future, although in my previous discussion with Dustin, from a land use standpoint. He has told us that we are limited to four lots. And that's, that's because of your land use plan, your general plan.
Any questions for the applicant?
The, the access, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry? Yes, unless you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
The access on 2760 West, is that an agreement between the, the landowner that you represent and the neighbors?
We're not aware of any written agreement, but it's his, it's a historical driveway. It's been improved. The adjacent owner's fence is configured such that the driveway goes past it to get onto this property. So there was some thought process in allowing this over time.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now open the public comment portion of the meeting. If there are any comments from the public, please come forward.
Hello, my name is John Hales. I live on 2670. That proposed flag lot would be right to the south of my property. I'm strongly in dis, I absolutely do not want that. That lot, that's, I, that front lot, proposed lot two, that should be a single lot. And then moving forward for the potential larger lot one. That, if anything, wanting to be the four lots, that should be plan that would come down the road and work on that historical access. Get an easement, improve that. But I'm absolutely opposed to a flag lot going to the south of my property. To the south of my neighbor who is also in attendance in this meeting would just provide just a weird. Thing rather than allowing that 2670 frontal space to actually house a nice home to fit in our neighborhood. Rather than to feed a lot back to two kind of small, current would be tough shed properties that are kind of a. Not in accordance with the current neighborhood. One is a converted garage that is being lived in, and the other one is a really small kind of just. When we work hard to take care of our properties and maintain a super nice street neighborhood. It just doesn't fit. I know he wants to get as much as he can out of the property, but in all reality, lot two should. Not have a flag lot, have actual access to 2670. And the proposed lot one should lose the flag lot and have it subdivided there possibly. I don't want any more homes behind my home than. At all possible.
Okay, thank you.
Just to summarize, I mean, I want to make sure I'm getting the gist of what you're saying. It, it's an aesthetic. Concern and then what are, what are the, just succinctly what.
Obviously, we don't want any more homes in our neighborhood. We would love that property to be finished and actually have the sidewalk go through and have it. Just in line with the rest of 2670, which all has homes fronted on that street, rather than it being broke up. The gate that was being talked about, it's tips over. I put it up constantly. It's just. A chain link fence and just a farm, like a cow ranch kind of farm gate, and it's. Yeah, it's kind of an eyesore. The kids, it's a dirt pathway that they do take care of the weeds, but other than that. It's, it would be nice to just have lot two be an actual legitimate lot. And then the lot one be split into whatever, but I think the cul-de-sac idea of 2760. Would make perfect sense if they could get that arrangement on the driveway access.
I have another question. Was your home built after these homes were?
It was the very first one in that neighborhood.
Your, your house?
Yep.
Before these homes in this lot were built?
No, those have been there a lot before. My home on 2670 there. Was the first in the 19 lot subdivision that was built by my class. So those two. Properties, like I said, one is a small house, the other one is a garage. They were there before for sure. It was on, it's on farm, farmland agriculture. But the original person that lived there doesn't live there. So it's not like a heritage, you know, long-term person that's hold outlet. Obviously, the property's been acquired and they want to split it, which I get that. I just, like I said, I think there's just a more thoughtful way to split it than to do the flag lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments? Please come forward.
My name is Lisa Rivera, and my backyard is. Right along the, right next to John Hales. He's right along 2670, and I'm just right next to that. So. I'm concerned with the, if we subdivide and create that lot two and that flag law as well, but. My concern is also that that lot two could potentially be split into two lots in the future. I think that it would, I'm not sure size-wise, but my husband and I years ago, when this land was for sale, we walked through it and we're like, okay. The 8,000 square foot minimum, like you could potentially get two lots possibly, and. I'm concerned about what could potentially happen in the future that we get now two homes squished in that little area. Especially with that easement. That easement also goes right by my backyard. They just lined up. That's concerning to me. I have children and. I also. I, this area, when we purchased, it is a beautiful space. We'd love to see it cleaned up. I know that there are people in the neighborhood. That we want that land, like people would, we would buy it. We, if, if we had the ability to. So I do think that changing the zoning probably has to happen. I don't know if we can buy agricultural land and things. So I do think that the zoning needs to change, but it also just opens up a lot of questions for us and worry about what will happen. In that tight space, because it's maybe look big on this map, but it's not big. But at the same time, seems like a lot of things could go in. And if it was acquired by the wrong hands and they could build something there, that just really worries us.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, please.
I'm concerned that this was brought up in February, and this is, the first I heard about it, oh, I'm Tina Carter, so. Let's see, I'm kind of by with directions, but I am in the cul-de-sac by Lisa Rivera, so this also really affects my family. Our, our house is the last built in that cul-de-sac, so we are the newest. We've been there for about five years. I have another proposal completely, and that is, you talk about walkability, right? Why can't we create a green space here? We, Provo City buys the land for a decent amount. So the owner is not shafted, and we create something beautiful that everyone in our neighborhood enjoys. My other concern, because I highly doubt, even though I would love it if there was the funding to do that. Is please do not allow multiple houses squished in this little spot. And also, how are we supposed to learn about instances like this? As far as I know, I'm the only one who received a flyer. About this meeting, nobody else. So I'm very grateful that I heard about it, but especially all these people who are involved. Why did nobody else? I feel like Wes Provo is getting a little shafted.
Thank you. Care there any more comments from the public?
I'm a little nervous.
Hey, you're fine.
I'm Sidro's, I was, I'm the owner of that property. So I was talking with Scott to subdivide in two lots. As you've seen, the lot is already, already there. It's, I was planning to build my. My primary home. So I, I've been sitting on the, on the land for four years, already thinking, what, thinking and planning what I'm gonna end up doing. But. All I can tell you, it's that I'm planning to build. The. Two beautiful homes there are gonna be nicest are the ones are there already. So that's my plan, but we was just figured it out, just without the flag lap. But hopefully, we can get the opportunity to get to, to legal lots, so that way I can build. Two beautiful, nice homes in that, into that property. So I'm not looking down the future to, to subdivide on four lots, whatever. All I want is just start, that's one of my main projects. And then hopefully that this can happen and have my neighbors pleased and happy, you know? At the end, that's, that's what matters, you know? So that's all I have to say.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm Ellis Hales, I appreciate the owner of the property coming giving his viewpoints because that is our biggest concern. As we've been here for over eighteen years and watched the development grow, which we're grateful for. We just want to make sure that, you know, our property values are increasing. My bigger concern is if there is a flag lot drivability at the, I'm glad he said he's only gonna build two homes. If we can hold him to that, that's great because we already have issues with parking all around where, you know, people are building their homes and there's too many cars, too many, you know, too many drivers, not enough space. And that's a concern for us with our kids' safety and with the kids driving. I do look forward to that sidewalk being completed because we have petitioned the city multiple times to finish it for the safety of our children. And we're told we couldn't do anything until somebody develops it, which has been hard. The other concern is the neighbors that asked me to speak, that live on the backside facing it. You know, their bigger concern is again, the type of quality home that would be built in their backyard. As we're right now, they have a beautiful view of a nice grassy area. The new owner has done a very good job of keeping the weeds down and taking care of it. But it is substantially lower than our property. Our property is about six feet higher than this current piece of property. My concern is water drainage and how it's going to be developed. Maybe that can be discussed later, I don't know. But my bigger concern is it being raised to the level to keep all our properties safe as they develop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final call for public comment. Okay, not seeing any, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments or questions we want to follow up on from the residents?
Well, if we're really only talking about item five right now, I think this is a no-brainer and we can move along. We've, we've talked about how this is a cleanup, so I would say let's make a motion on item five and then we can discuss more for item six.
My only curiosity is, do we lose some review power by doing?
I think we do, but I, I think we do, so if there's any, if anyone wants to chime in, like do it now.
Well, we haven't even read in item six, so.
Well, I mean, on the rezone.
Oh, I just feel like what Ms. Barnes said is very relevant, that it's not even, it's like a non-conforming agricultural lot. It's not, and if we're talking about general plan and the preservation of agricultural properties, it's not being used for agricultural currently and it's smaller than it should be. And the general plan also calls for single-family homes and especially on the west side. And it meets like all of the goals. So I feel like for me, it feels like a very logical move and a more of a cleanup than a, than an exception.
Can I ask Ms. Barnes some questions? So if we're, if we are just trying to clean up the zoning with this item number five, the flag lot, explain to me how, do we have to have the flag lot? Or can we just clean up the zoning and since there's a historical access to the other piece, you could just divide this into two pieces?
So biggest issue is that, is that the reason for this rezone is because the applicant wants to subdivide the property. When this property has not been subdivided before, it's not an official, you know, building lot. When that happens, it has to come up to standard with our requirements, which includes curb gutter and, well, it already has, I think it already has government gutter, but sidewalk improvements, it's going to, they're gonna have to raise it. That was brought up before, but they're gonna have to work through some drainage issues. Raise it up so it will match, basically make it buildable. That's what happens when you subdivide a lot. So with this rezone, I mean subdivisions don't come before you technically. So with this rezone, we would continue with our, our review of all of those different development standards, especially with the engineering department, that'd be a pretty big part of this. A flag lot, so the main, like I mentioned, the main issue here, I totally realize that that historical driveway has been in place since who knows when, you know, probably decades. When you create a new subdiv- subdivided lot, like I said, it has to be in conformance with city code. And city code states that you have to have proper access from a public street. So.
So that historical drive doesn't conform?
Yes, exactly.
So this parcel could not be subdivided if we didn't do a flag lot there?
Exactly, uh huh. We have to, we have to preserve that, that frontage according to our city code.
So the, the property owner could still use the access at twenty six seventy, but technically there has to be that easement to twenty six seventy west?
Yes, and it's super confusing that both streets are the same numbers, but just transposed. But yes, exactly.
Yeah, I would say if they ever change the access, that's gonna be, hopefully they don't get packages at the wrong address for a while afterwards.
Yeah.
Those names are unfortunate.
Well, like the, like the resident or the property owner said, it sounds like he's gonna be building two new homes, one on each parcel. So maybe with the, you know, building a new home, changing the act, the address might be a little bit easier, possibly, hopefully.
But I, I, I think it should be clear though that, that, that like at twenty seven sixty, that they're at the complete mercy of the other, the, the property owner to the, to the west. Like, cause that's, their drive is wholly on the other person's property. So even if we'd like to see something or a future cul-de-sac, that's not even, that's not even on the table.
I think the, the property owner has or did approach the property owner to the west and before, you know, some type of, when they, when they were first talking about this a few months ago, some type of, I don't know, agreement and the property owner to the west, I believe stated that he was not interested in any agreement at this time. Who knows, again, who knows if that will change in the future, which is why engineering is trying to prepare just in case. It's, this is private land, private owners, private property rights. So we can't make anyone put a cul-de-sac on their land if they don't want to.
Although there is a fence there, right? There's a fence already, so the drive is on the other side of his fence.
Uh huh.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Can you hold them to two homes on these two lots?
So that's what it's earned for, well, sorry, that's what we're trying to get it zone for. Is two houses, I mean, only one house per lot. Because it's an eight thousand square foot lot requirement, technically depending on access, frontage requirements. There's widths and depths of lots, that kind of thing. Depending on all of that, possibly something else could come in, but as it is right now, it could only be those two lots.
And, and if something else were to happen, it would happen on the first lot, not on the second one, right? The second lot is not big enough to subdivide.
I would assume so, with, with lot two, while it is eighteen thousand, about eighteen thousand square feet. And like I said, the minimum is eight thousand square feet. What has to happen is, so the frontage of lot two is ninety-three feet. And the required frontage for a lot in the R one eight zone is eighty feet. And the required frontage for flag lot is twenty feet. So already you can't do anything else, you can't do another flag lot on lot two. Lot one, obviously there's not gonna be a double flag lot there either. So that really depends on future development of twenty seven sixty west.
So we can feel fairly reassured based on those numbers that lot two is gonna be one home?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like, like it seems like it would require a
We'd have to, it'd come here and we'd have to say.
Exactly, it'd have to be some type of ordinance amendment, which, yeah, which is not, we're not interested in that.
And we're voting on subdividing that, well, right now we're voting on, we're discussing voting on amending the zone. But item six, we're only talking about this specific subdivision. We're not talking about, are they gonna try to cut up into like seven or what, you know? Right, that, that would be a separate hearing on that topic, right?
So, yeah, so item six, concept plan, we, we didn't require an elevation of whatever the new house is gonna look like. Just because it's one new house and the applicant doesn't quite know what he wants that to look like yet. He's working with his contractors. So we didn't require that there. Technically subdivision approval is a staff level administrative approval thing. But on the concept plan, we can, item, we can certainly talk about how this property could potentially be cut up. But as for right now, lot two, its current configuration, it couldn't be a flag lot. I mean.
And this would, this would actually ensure that, the one flag to the property one would actually ensure that property two couldn't be split up anymore.
Exactly, exactly. Unless there's somehow a full public street that goes through there, but there won't be because there is built houses sort of completely surrounding.
I was gonna say, one situation it could happen is if both properties got purp- purchased, twenty seven sixty got brought in, you had access over there.
Exactly.
Then you could use the existing flag on a second lot.
Yeah.
There, right?
Yeah, but again, that would be completely dependent on the property owner to the west.
Right.
But still, worst case scenario, that's only one more potential lot because of the street access that's required. So there can't be more than three ever.
Is there a fence that goes on the back of those properties that come off the cul-de-sac of five thirty north? No fence?
I'm not.
On their backyard?
I'm not sure.
So that's.
Got it, okay. So the, I'll just repeat that really quick for the record. But the resident said that there is no fence because of the great difference between the two properties or the multiple properties.
Okay, thanks.
Do we know if that difference in height will continue or they have to fill in to bring it up?
Wanna come up and talk about great differences?
We will have to conform and, and do our design based upon your design criteria. I'm anticipating that there will be some fill involved. The, the other surrounding properties filled for a reason. So we will have to conform to your requirements on that.
Yeah, I would assume it's gonna have to fill to the same level.
Seems so too, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you both.
Oh, I'm ready to make a motion. Item number five, I'm recommending that the planning commissioner approves a zone map amendment from the A one five agricultural zone to the R one eight, one family residential zone in order to create a two lot residential subdivision located at four eighty-four north, twenty seven sixty west, Lakeview South neighborhood. Uh, yeah, no, no other conditions.
Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to clarify that we're forwarding that positive recommendation to the municipal council that we're not actually approving the zone change.
Right, recommending approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Shin? Aye.
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 And I will vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. Okay, let's go to item six, since we've already been talking about it anyway. Scott Dosher requests concept plan approval for a two lot subdivision in a proposed R one point eight, one family residential zone located at four eighty-four north, twenty seven sixty west, Lakeview South neighborhood. We'll invite Mary Barnes back up.
Thank you, all right. So as you're all aware, with rezones, we require a concept plan approval. Usually rezones might include, you know, large swathes of land, things like that. With this one, and so therefore, you know, a concept plan is really important to see what is exactly going to go there. With this one, because the rezone is simply matching the surrounding zoning here, let me, I'll just stay in this one, I think. Because it's simply matching the surrounding zoning and the applicant will be building a single-family home that meets the requirements of the planning code and the building code. Same as everyone else, we didn't require elevations or a concept plan or a site plan. It should just be, it is going to just be a single-family home like everyone else's with a slightly bigger lot because it's an eighteen thousand square foot lot. With the concept plan approval, the engineers, obviously, it's not the actual final subdivision. So we don't like, we don't put on all of the requirements that, we don't look at it like a final subdivision approval. But with this concept plan application, the engineers have let the applicant know about the few like utility requirements, pulling in a sewer line. They've talked to, they've, you know, put in the comment, their, their comment was this concept plan looks great. But here are some, a few things that you're gonna have to look at when we get to the final subdivision application. So things like those utility lines, the finishing the road on, sorry, the sidewalk in twenty six seventy west. Possibly looking at an easement for possible cul-de-sac and like fill and grading, that kind of thing. That's all going to be looked at by the engineers in the final subdivision. But I'm just letting you know that these, these are all things that we're aware of. It's going to meet by the end of that final subdivision process, it will meet code. And the applicant is aware of all of these things that the engineering department are going to ensure are correct. So concept plan, there really isn't one other than it is going to be a single-family home on lot two. There's an existing single-family home on lot one, sounds like there'll be a new single-family home on lot one in the future. Any questions?
You just mentioned potential cul-de-sac. Where would you see that cul-de-sac going now with this particular two lot flag situation?
So what I mean by that is the engineers at Public Works are concerned with possibly in the future, if the property to the west wants to develop, then a cul-de-sac will probably be required. So they're concerned with, if you see twenty seven sixty west as it comes down, if you imagine it bulging out, there'd be a sliver in this guy's property. So they're concerned with conserving that area just in case. And either way, there would never be anything built on it because it'd be too close to the property line with setbacks and stuff like that. But that's something that they're going to be addressing in the final subdivision plan and the applicant is aware of that.
But if that, if that happened, then you wouldn't have to have the flag entrance anymore.
It depends on where the property owner wants to put a new home on lot one. Maybe it's closer to lot two, of course, with setbacks. It really depends on that. And who knows, like I said, property owner to the west has said that he does not want to develop. And who knows how long that would be, maybe it's, you know, decades.
Right, thanks.
I would maybe, it seems to me that looking at that, the plan, if in the future there was access to lot one to legitimately front onto a cul-de-sac on the west side like you're talking about. I mean, I couldn't, I, I could imagine that they might even, you know, the owner of lot one might even sell that little driveway strip to lot two and it could be trans, like could become part of lot two if it was no longer needed, right? In the future?
That is possible, yes, if, if that's what the, again, this is all very, very future and depends on so many different private property owners that we can't really predict what will happen. But that is a possible scenario if the property owner wanted to eliminate lot one and they had the proper amount of public street frontage on a possible future cul-de-sac. Right, yeah, so that's a great point.
There are times when we've had developers look at that, right? What could development of properties adjacent to this property look like to make sure they don't cut off access, et cetera?
Right, yeah.
That was not done in this case, right?
Do you mean like? What, what do you mean, like the development?
So I, I, I just, I get the feeling, if I can speak for us as a group, that the big concern is if that develops in the future, have we just really constrained the best use of this land?
I see.
Because we allowed a flag lot now, right? And now there's a lot of stuff you could not do with a lot to the west or even to more efficiently divide this lot because we've done this now, right? And at least for me, that's my biggest concern. Have we just created a bad situation? Have we just created a bad situation that has to stay a bad situation, actually creates other bad situations in the future? And I don't know, it would help me a lot if I could see. Different potential ways that this lot and the lot to the west could be divided up in the future. To, to lay those fears, right?
Wouldn't you say like under R one eight that that it kinda limits? The future development uh possibilities, I mean, if this was, is this uh under a different rezone. Then the options open up more, but with the R one eight, it, it, it kinda caps the, the den, it caps the density.
Definitely.
It's gonna have to meet standards for every single lot on R one eight and, and.
It does, but we just talked about how lot two is actually big enough to be two lots in R one eight. Lot one is over an acre, you could get three or four out of that.
But I don't think they'll meet like frontage requirements.
Lot two is big enough to be two lots, but you don't have the frontage to make two lots. So yes, it's big enough an area, but there are a whole bunch of other subdivision requirements that Daniel's referring to that you couldn't meet.
Well, except it could be two lots with this flag lot if there was access on the other side, right?
Added, do you mean like if you did what Commissioner Shin said and added that driveway in, at a later?
No, what I'm saying is if in the future twenty seven sixty came in, gave access to that side. Then you could fit a flag lot there because you've already got the driveway.
Oh, do you mean so?
I mean, like, I could draw this out for you.
A cul-de-sac and then there's a lot here and then there's a flag.
If you look at the upper right hand corner here, if you had the street coming down further, you could have. Two lots over here plus a flag lot plus that lot, you could put four lots on those things.
I, I'm, I'm, I hope you don't mind if I jump in, I, I feel really hesitant. Like if I'm in court, I'm gonna say like objection, this is speculative, it's, it's, it feels very. Speculative, what if, what if this, what if that, what if that in the future? And, and like what we have, but uh, there's part of me that just feels like, no, this is what we have before us.
Um, but how many de- bad designs and bad situations in the city do we have because of that? Because we don't look to the future planning of an area, we just look at one single lot and. Ignore everything surrounding it, I don't think that's the best.
Cause there's, there's a part of me that says, like, could this be subdivided further into smaller lots? May, maybe, but I'll tell you what, it sounds like there, the neighbors are gonna come back and, and they're gonna say no. Uh, if you can limit this to two lots, limit it to two lots, any further subdivision would. Would really rankle us.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the question. This is R one eight zoning and it should be R one eight zoning.
Right.
If every lot meets the requirements of the R one eight zone, eight thousand square feet and the right frontage and can meet these setbacks and all that. Why does it matter if it's two or three or four? If it meets all the requirements of the underlying zone, why does that matter?
And that's not my concern, um, actually, I would love to see it, two, three, or three or four lots, because we need more housing, right? And they still would be bigger lots than all these surrounding houses. But it's because twenty seven sixty comes in right next to it. And if we just made that back fence for everything because we put a flag lot in here. Now we can't do that ever, that's my word, and maybe I'm wrong, but since I can't see. How that would go.
The engineering department is saying that they're trying to plan for that.
Yeah.
By requiring a slight dedication with the subdivision plat. That leaves open the possibility for a future cul-de-sac on twenty seven sixty, should that ever happen. So engineering has tried to think ten or twenty years down the road in case that should happen.
Mm-hmm, so if that's the case, and that was divided into three. Then I guess we would just have to hope that the flag lot would go away and the driveway would be sold to the neighbor. Kind of thing, I mean, I guess part of this is I always view flag lots as. An less than ideal situation that we have to do sometimes. And if there's a way to avoid it, I mean, I look at this and I think, man, that lot does, I agree with the neighbors. Look better if you made it a little shorter and a little wider, where it lined up with the property already comes down vertically. And came straight across, that is a cleaner, better design for the neighborhood.
The.
And a flag lot.
The problem with that, like I, um.
And the only problem with that is twenty seven sixty doesn't come down far enough.
And also, if you subdivide a lot, I mean, we can't just like take a bite out of lot one. It has to be a subdivided lot and in the city when you subdivide a lot, it's, both lots have to be subdivided, they have to come up to city code and city code says.
Right, I get that, I just worry that the best use of this land would be to wait for twenty seven sixty to come down so that you can do it right.
I thought, I think what Ms. Barnes is saying is that even if you, if you divided lot one in half right now. The, the one in the center would have to have a flag lot because it would have to have access to that public.
You divide it that way, but if you divide it the other way, you've got two.
So you're saying you would have the cul-de-sac come down with a flag lot across that accesses both of them?
No, I don't think you need that here, you, I can draw it for, if you just did that. And the cul-de-sac came in like this.
I do wanna point out that the property owner to the west has stated that he does not want to develop. So while the engineers are planning for possible development with that sliver of an easement. Um, we've, we know that. He doesn't want to, so.
I'm just saying, this creates a difficult situation, right, where you already have a pretty small situation. I think we're settling for something that is far less than ideal, I think the neighbors would agree that it's far less than ideal. Because we have these rules that we have to follow, which is kinda silly in my mind, but.
I'm, for Mr. Pepperoni or Mr. Day, um. Twenty seven sixty west is a public street, and I'm sure it exists on a street plan somewhere. So is there, I, I'm not familiar with at what point what the street plan says becomes. The rule that somebody has to say, okay, I'm gonna give up this little piece for so that. Because the street is there to stub in for future development and this is future development. So at what point can, can they say, we need to build this so that this guy can access his property?
So usually, street plans are more for, um, and stop me if I'm wrong. But they're more for to show connectivity, it's not so much to help developers. So we don't usually show cul-de-sacs because the configuration, for example, five thirty north, I don't think we would have had that. On a, on a street plan, but um, you know, twenty six seventy west probably wasn't a street plan. Because it does provide connect, connections and connectivity, um, cul-de-sacs are usually left up. To um, for configuration by the developer depending on how many lots they wanna fit in there.
So twenty seven sixty was just an idea that somebody had that was never intended to go through, but it was hoped to go through.
It, yeah, probably something like that.
That's, I was just hoping that there was something that said, no, this is the city plan, when we, when we built this road, it was supposed to stub into this and. Therefore, we can access it now. But that's not the case, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think I would agree that, I mean, we have, we have what we have in front of us here, uh, you know, we're being asked to approve or deny it. Um, and if it, you know, it, given the constraints, I mean. If we were to say, we're gonna, we, you, you have to wait because we wanna. See if the other, you know, if something's gonna happen down the road, it could, it would just hold things up. You know, maybe indefinitely as opposed to us, you know, saying yes or no to what, what is being proposed here, you know? I guess, sorry, we're, we're not on group discussion maybe, um. That's all, yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and let the applicant, if he has anything further to present.
Thank you for your discussion and your, uh. The items that you brought up are important, I appreciate the neighbors speaking. And helping us understand their concerns as well. Um, there is a lot to break down in this, uh, in this project and how we move forward. Um, the first thing I'd like to say is that the owner has attempted to. Work out a situation for the future that could work for his property and the property owner to the west. That property owner, uh, number one, did not want to entertain the concept of improving with a cul-de-sac and subdividing. Uh, and further did not want to give a, an easement for access. So the, the property owner, uh, that I'm representing cannot do anything about that situation. Um, but is willing to do it if he could work that out, the adjacent property owner. Um. There has been a lot of discussion about whether or not a flag lot or the flag driveway would. Uh, create a situation that would be detrimental in the future if we wanted to do something else. I have done quite a few sketches to look at how we could do this, and depending on how the adjacent. Property owner was willing to work with us on a cul-de-sac. Don't believe that the existence of the flag lot would keep us from doing anything else in the future. And indeed, it's, from what I understand from staff, it is required, if we're gonna do the subdivision because there is not a. Right away connection to the west, we have to do the flag lot. We have no other alternative to do it, um. I th- I think that, uh, there's no way to know what could happen in the future as far as the neighbor and what they could do ten years from now. So we, we really can only deal with the situation as it is today. Um. We will follow the R one eight requirements and we're required to, and uh, what we're proposing now does meet those requirements. And everything that happens in the future would further have to do that. We are rezone now to R one eight, so we have to work within that section of the code. Um, one of the concerns that's been brought up quite a bit is the flag lot and. It's. A flag lot is, to me, it's a long driveway. It, it. I don't know that it has a different character than any other driveway other than the length of it. And we're kind of constrained to have that length there in order to, to create lot two. Um. So I don't know whether we have an alternative to do that because we have to have a flag. Um. As far as there, there have been some concerns expressed about the condition of the property and so on. My thought is that the best way for us to get to an improved condition in the future. Is to allow the owner to subdivide and build a house on lot two and potentially on lot one. There are houses and buildings on lot one now, and we have taken great care to make sure that we've met setbacks from those existing houses. So that we meet R one eight, where we divide, we create that dividing line. So we believe we will conform to R one eight, but. I believe our pathway to improvement for that whole area is to allow this to happen. So that we can, the, the owner can build a new house on the new lot. And eventually probably build another one to replace the existing house. Now, the, if you look back and I, I'm not sure I know how to get, Mary, maybe you can help me. Uh, the aerial photograph that shows the, yeah, that one right there. Yes, so if you look at the shape of the applicant or the owner's property and the one to the west, it's an odd shape. How did that all occur and how did we get to that shape? I don't know the history. Why is twenty seven sixty a stub that ends where it does? I don't know. If we were planning it today, we would probably lay things out completely differently for the entire neighborhood, but. This is the condition that we have now. Uh, I, I agree that an extension of twenty seven sixty and a cul-de-sac may make a lot of sense someday. But we don't have the ability to do that right. So we appreciate your consideration of this, I believe the best path forward is to. Uh, approve the concept plan and allow us to go through the final plat process to create these two lots. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Okay, it looks like we don't have any questions, thank you. Okay, we'll open it for public comments, um, obviously, we remember your comments for item five, so we'll try to limit those to additional comments that bring up new. Um, objections or support that you may have.
I really appreciated the property owner saying, oh, this is Tina Carter back again. I really appreciate the property owner saying that he plans on two houses, but. What I hear from the engineer, are you the engineer? It sounds a little different, they're like saying two separate things, it could be that I'm wrong. So, I really appreciate the two lots and we would like to make sure that we are included in any further things that happen. I also think the owner to the west. I can't believe how easily you said, oh, so we can't just take it from him, like he owns that land. So, I don't know, I think you need to think about the original property owners and what they really wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments?
Uh, John Hales, uh, I am. Okay with the two lots, I like that idea that the space around that. Yeah, sorry, I, I'm a fan of the two lot idea and I do appreciate the property owner's um, information on his plan towards that. Uh, Tina said she'd like a park, that would be great, I don't know that that's necessarily on the city's plan, um, as much as that would be wonderful. But a lot on, or a nice house on that lot would definitely be. A lot quieter than four houses on there, so I'm in support of that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to commission for comments and discussion. Say that again? Oh, sorry, we'll close the, the public comments.
Everybody go home. I have a comment or a discussion item, I, we talked a lot about how it's unfortunate that. The division of the subdivision concept couldn't be more efficiently distributed. But as far as flag lots go, I don't have a problem with flag lots. I don't feel, I mean, like, they're an inefficient use of land, but. Being next to one wouldn't make me upset. I have, I, I think it would, it essentially provides another twenty, twenty foot setback, that's not provided, like. The R one eight zone requires certain side yard or front yard or backyard setbacks, and now because the flag lots there, all of those property owners have an additional twenty feet. Between them and any structure that, that would be, then would be required.
Yeah, I get that, I just don't know if, in case we would use it if we didn't have to.
Exactly.
Right, it's, it's not the ideal.
It's not ideal, but as far as the negatives, I think it takes away some of the negatives of being adjacent to the property because.
Yeah.
I imagine there will eventually be a fence between the properties and it won't be like a, a. It won't be like someone's parking their motorhome there or blocking your view, it will be a pa- it's a driveway that you have to pass through, you can't leave it blocked. So I feel like as far as nuisance value, it will have minor nuisance value and. And provide access to the back and. Will give them some sort of assurance that there can't probably be more than. Three total.
Yeah, three.
If that, if they built the, if they built the house on lot one to the eastern side, that would maybe open them up for future development if that road ever went down, but. Otherwise, it will still be a nice, like you said, way bigger than any other. Lot.
Around.
Around, so can't complain about overcrowding or anything.
Yeah. I heard the ding, so apparently your time's up.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, anyone else, yeah?
Yeah, I, I'd share a few thoughts, I, I think I'd echo what was said there. Um, yeah, I think in terms of, you know, the way that, the way that it will sit on the neighborhood doing a development like that. Yeah, I look, I look directly across the street and, you know, there's a house on the corner looking at this area map. Across the street that's, you know, the, the frontage, at least, you know. On this, on the street is going to be. Um. Yeah, excuse me, I'm looking at the. Where is it, the, the map here, the frontage for lot two would be ninety three feet on twenty six seventy west, so you'd have. Yeah, right, there you'd have ninety three feet, and just looking at the, you know, at the map here, it looks like that's more than, you know. Probably more width than a lot of these other houses that are fronting onto the other neighborhood streets around, so I've. I think if it, you know, if the concern is, is aesthetics, you know, to me, it seems like you could definitely have a house that would, that would fit on that parcel that would. You know, that, that wouldn't look out of place, um, even compared to the house, the homes on the cul-de-sac across the street. Um, it, it doesn't feel to me like it's a drastic difference, uh, maybe not even a difference at all, um. Looking at the numbers, and I, I appreciate the, the neighbors, um, coming to share their thoughts and express their, their concerns on this. Um, I think it's, it, maybe it's worth saying to, you know, to alleviate concerns with this, that, yeah, with. With the conditional on having this two lot subdivision plan approved. This is only approving two homes, this isn't some sort of a back door to say. And then in a few weeks from now, when it finally goes through, it's gonna. and then in a few weeks from now, when it finally goes through, it's going to be like ten, you know, it's not going to be like ten lots or an apartment building. This would only be two lots and any kind of a future change would have to come back for another hearing, go through planning commission, go through city council. Right? That, that's, that's what we're talking about here. So.
I, oh, I don't, I don't think so. I, I mean, I, I mean, it Well, what I'm saying R one eight, it, it, it would go straight to administrative approval.
Would it then?
Assuming it meets all the R one eight standards. I just
Okay, okay, that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, for anything else, anything that's not R one eight, there would have to be a zone change and that would require. But R one eight standards right now require that frontage for each lot, which means that unless something miraculous happens with twenty-seven sixty west, nothing's going to change because this is the only acceptable option right now.
Okay, yeah.
So there is safety in that.
That's a good correction, yeah. So unless the cul-de-sac were built out, unless, and the neighbor doesn't want to build out, uh, as, as has been said. Unless that changed, there, there would be no, you know, there's no, this is kind of what we're, what we're looking at. If that's, it's, it's accurate.
No, it seem, it seems to me the neighbor's biggest concern was something like higher density, multiple lots. And although, like I personally don't like a flag lot because I can't imagine plowing and shoveling that drive. Uh, but given the, the size of these lots, like one point one acre, point four something, those are, that's very low density. Yeah, I, I, I think if, if, if there's members of the public who, who would like to see it as a green space, I know that if you were to email or communicate to any of the city council members, they would gladly entertain that and bring, they, they they discuss those kind of things. They're the ones that control the purse as far as purchasing properties, but I don't, I don't know if that's been proffered or or even, I mean, but something you're welcome to communicate to city council, um, because that's more their jurisdiction.
I'm okay with this.
I am too. I was gonna say, um, we hear a lot of people come and say, I, I don't want my neighbor to have an empty lot because I like the empty lot. Um, but it is, it is their land. Um, as you pointed out, um, this is his land. So, um, we, like I said, we hear that all the time. We also usually hear people say, we don't want anyone. We don't want more houses, but that's a neighborhood of houses, you know, twenty years ago, they weren't there. So, um, this is unfortunately how it is, I guess. I wanted to say Yeah, I'm in support. I do think that the situation restricts it to two.
So I would love it if I didn't have five houses in my backyard, a very small lot size and had an acre lot and a half acre lot instead, but.
I don't, I, I personally don't understand that mentality. I'm not like that about it. Um.
I mean, like, I welcome, I guess what I'm saying is I welcome what I have, but like this is very roomy in comparison.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think that
I think this is lovely.
Complain about it. Um, but yeah, I personally don't have a hierarchy in my mind of um what kind of people and things. So, uh, yeah, but I'm in support.
Another, one other thought to your point is if, you know, this is again, talking like future, far future down the road. If there is some development pressure to be like, oh dang it, we, you know, we're stuck with this giant lot. I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe in the far future, there could be, you know, a, an ADU overlay, so you could, you know, if there's a large backyard and it's like, oh, now nobody can build on that. And again, I'm saying the far future, you know, a lot of things would have to change with zoning to allow, you know, but that, that could be like an option for, if there was some you know, I, I don't think we're going to be, you know, our kids won't have to be stuck with like, you know, being like, oh, there's this spot that can never be developed now in, you know, now that things are different, whatever. I, I think that you could figure out ways to, you know, if, if a lot of things changed, it wouldn't be like, oh, it's locked off forever that we made a mistake here necessarily.
Yeah, and I think that it's important to, to, um, one of you mentioned, uh, that you didn't hear about it. Um, I invite you to be active, speaking to the city council and the planning commission about things you want changed. Because like Adam said, they're going to have to be, we're going to have to adapt. The city has to adapt as things change, as needs change. You know, people change. Oh yeah, I'm not criticizing. So yeah, this isn't the time for response, sorry. But yeah, I, I just invite you all to, um, to be involved that way. I was gonna say about Adam's comment, um, isn't, aren't ADUs allowed on the west side or like generally? Okay, so that
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that is, I think by right, is that correct? Like?
Yes. Any other comments?
I'm ready to make a motion. Anyone?
I guess I'll just finish since I brought up a lot of concerns that I appreciate the care that's gone into that and that it has been looked at. Um, I think that's important. Um, I just think, I, and honestly, I think these are sins of many years ago where these didn't get planned out well, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I think you're right, streets would have been laid out differently today to help this situation. But I, I agree with you guys. It is what we've got and we got to look at what we have in the end. So with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll just say that I feel better knowing because I, I do share the neighborhood's concerns and we are approving two lots. And so that makes me feel better. And once a house is built on lot two, we're done, right? Then that seals that portion up. So, because it's very difficult once a home's built there to the, you're priced out of buying it to tear it down and do something different.
Right, right. Theoretically, it'd be possible, but in practical terms, nobody would want to do that.
Okay, we're ready for your motion.
And we're not actually approving a two lot subdivision. We're approving a concept plan for one. And, and after all the reviews and code requirements are met, then the staff will do the final approval.
Right, uh, I move that that we approve the concept plan uh for a two lot subdivision in a proposed R one eight residential zone located at four eighty-four north, twenty-seven sixty west, Lakeview South neighborhood.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we'll begin with Commissioner Shan.
I.
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 And I will also vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. We're gonna go ahead and take just a quick five minute break and then we'll address the last three items of the evening.
You didn't make it though. You should have told me to wait, not wait.
I view it more as you can put a T cul-de-sacs and all kinds of houses, if you look at the size.
I, you totally could. I think
That's why I'm saying if we're gonna block, this is now always one lot. Is that really the best interest for us?
I'd like, like from a planning perspective, where we want like better land use and a little bit more intensity, you're, I a hundred percent agree with you. But I don't like
So that's why I always struggle with
I, I think we're just to- I think we're totally
Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene. We have three more items and I want to make sure we get through those if possible. What time do we usually end? After nine, right? Okay. So we will try to get through this as efficiently as possible. Although maybe we'll have to bend that if it's eight, just to keep them together, but There's Lisa, okay. Okay, let's go ahead to item seven. John Jensen requests approval of a zone map amendment from the R one point eight PB one family residential zone to the A one airport industrial zone in order to develop a twenty-four acre flex industrial campus located approximately at thirty-four fifty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood. Dustin Wright is going to present this item. Huh? Oh, I'll read it. She told me to do it separately, but yes, I will gladly do that. Item eight, John Jensen requests concept plan approval for a twenty-five acre flex industrial campus in a proposed A one zone located approximately at thirty-four fifty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood.
All right, thank you. So here's uh kind of a look at this, these, this location here. So give you a little bit of background first because we've seen it um before. So back in two thousand twenty-one, uh, this property got rezoned to its current R one eight PD zone. And then there was a, an associated development with that that uh never really started, didn't move forward. Then in two thousand twenty-two, the general plan map uh changed to be the airport related. So that's over on the, the right hand side of the screen. So the general plan map's been updated and then in this, earlier this year, this request has come in uh for this rezone and it's similar to one that came in before in two thousand twenty-two that started. Um, but later was abandoned. So that's kind of a little bit of history on, on this, but So here's the concept plan that the applicant would um like to move forward with if this property is rezoned. Uh, so it's, they're to the airport industrial, so it's a two large uh warehouse buildings just off of center street there buffered by landscape uh buffer and then the parking. And then off on the backside by the Provo River would be a flex space, that smaller building on the back. Um, and then the whole property has landscaping buffers, parking and trails. And then here's kind of a close up of, of what the, that trail network that goes, wraps around the back of the property adjacent to the Provo River, um, what that looks like. And then also on the right hand side of the screen are the concept uh renderings of the what the development would look like for this. And so the staff recommendations for each items, uh, seven and eight are in the staff report. Um, item seven, the rezone would go on to the city council. So you'd be making a recommendation on that item. And you'd be making a, you'd be approving or denying the concept plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Yeah. Commissioner Shan.
Thank you. I have, I have a question with regards to the river uh plan, and this is kind of for my, just my background knowledge. I know that um a bit north of here, we have the new river delta that's been developed, right? And, and water flow has been diverted into that. It, long term, is this river route that currently is here, is this, is that going to, do you know, is that going to remain being like a partial, like some of the flow is going to be coming through that way and some is diverted, the river, the new river delta?
Correct, yeah. The, the current uh path of the river is gonna still be there, but the larger flow, I believe, is gonna feed the, or is feeding the delta area.
Okay, so there, there's, okay.
I can comment on that too, because this is my neighborhood and I was involved in some of this. Um, the federal government, when they put in the delta, guaranteed that a certain amount of flow would continue down this path as well. And so they have a gate system built in where they can control how much goes to the delta and how much comes down this route. Okay. Yes.
So I was on the planning commission when we uh made the original zone change from agricultural to a single family. And then I was also here when we changed the general plan for airport um industrial. But my, I'm wondering if you can give me a little timeline or, or understanding. It says here that there could be negative impacts with residential development here, so I'm asking these questions because I want to understand what the negative impacts are. So my question really is, why wasn't the subdivision, why didn't that happen? Was it, we talked a lot about clustering and, and mixed housing types and and uh how nice it would be to have a home next to the river and to have access to the trail. And, and then I know something happened that made it not um prudent or what, you know, so at some point, somebody made a decision. But we deliberated for a really long time on that to make it a really nice subdivision. So I'm wondering if you can help me remember what changed?
Yeah, I wasn't too involved with that, so I'm not sure. I don't know if Mr. Pepperoni has any information or recollection.
Or if I'm remembering the process wrong.
Um, I'm not, I don't remember it being clustered or a variety of housing types or sizes. It was a pretty standard subdivision.
Okay.
Um, I think one of the compelling reasons that we thought a, a change in the zone made sense after the subdivision was approved was that this is actually under the flight path of one of the runways.
So it's very loud?
Right.
Okay. So even though it looks like it's a nice place for a subdivision, in reality, it wasn't.
Right.
Okay.
If I can add to this, I served on a committee looking at that change. Um, the runway was a big factor. Also, Lakeview Parkway kind of cut it off and made it unwalkable with the other neighborhoods, et cetera, it kind of cut it off. And finally, the landowners and their purchasers at the time felt like they could get much more value out of the land. And so kind of all of those factors came together.
Okay, because as we look at um on page three Okay, because as we look at on page three, item B, it says that the public purpose is best served by the amendment in question. And we just passed a lake shores and rivers plan where we, one of the objectives is to preserve river access and then also the southwest area plan and the general plan both talk a lot about increasing single family housing, so. I just have a hard time deciding when we have goals. Like we're meeting goals with the airport industrial as well, but we're ignoring other goals and it's hard to know which purposes are more important when we address questions. So I don't want a house built under the the path of a jet engine, so I totally understand why that geographically isn't feasible anymore, but it's a shame. I guess full disclosure, it hasn't been zoned single family that long, so we're really not pulling the rug out of something that was going to be this beautiful thing. It was a it was a short term change, but it's, I'm sad that we're not able to meet that. And then along with that, the river access, is is the trail loop shown on the amenities for public use, or is it just for the the business tenants? Do you know?
I believe it should be for open as an easement for public access.
Okay, so then in that sense, we're still Mr. Pepperoni is giving a yes to that, so. So that means we are in fact meeting that goal, even though we're not meeting the goal for single family homes, so.
Yes, now, on that note, though, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the allotted units that were on this were then used for some of the density transfer that we set up from the east side, right? So we're going to still get the same number of homes on the west side.
Yes, that's correct.
True, since we do have a max, we can trade it out till we get it.
Yep.
That's right. Right now we have a land bank of almost four hundred units on west side that can be moved around because of projects just like that.
Right.
Is this the trail that's marked on brown? Is is this a segment of the Provo River Parkway Trail? Or is that, that's, okay.
That's on the other side of the river.
Okay, okay.
What is not shown here is there is access underneath Lakeview Parkway to a park on the other side that would have access here and it'll all be connected into a single network, but separate from the main trail.
Is this land on the east of this map where the new park is going to be, the Provo River Delta Park?
Yeah, it's right there.
It's right here, it's just that corner.
Oh, no, sorry.
I thought it was the whole thing.
It's this one.
No, it's right here.
No, that's, that's just the little piece of city property that that was going to get incorporated in, right? It's between Lake Shore Drive and Lakeview Parkway.
The park is coming, but that's just a piece of it.
Across from where the existing bathrooms are, so it's a little bit over. It's the right edge of your map.
Right here, there's a sign on the eastern portion of that triangle you pointed out to me that says the park is coming.
Yeah, it's actually this.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Oh, you're right, because that's where you come off the trail and it dead ends and you have to come down here.
Yep.
All right, I got my bearings.
Are we asking more questions?
Yes, please.
So on the neighborhood issues, demand for more flex warehouse, can you explain what the neighborhood issues were with that?
I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. Unless there's additional information in that staff report, but that was one of the items that he noted in the staff report. And I, yeah, I'm not sure if that was on the, I would think that that's something that they were wanting more of on the site instead of maybe just the smaller building, but the applicant is here who was at that meeting, so they might be able to address that a little bit better.
Any other questions, Mr. Wright?
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Okay, we'll invite the applicant to come forward and present. Just remember, you have fifteen minutes to present. Let us know when you're ready to take questions and we'll ask him at that time.
Yes, thank you. We're going to come up in a pair. My name is I was just about to say it. Sorry, my name is John Jensen.
He's from Orem and I'm Eric Jurgensen. I'm from New York.
And thank you, Commission, for letting us present to you tonight. We're, it's good to be here in Provo. As Dustin relayed, this is somewhat of a, you know, a repeat application. The concept plan is more or less the same plan that was presented twenty twenty two. And as staff and our team has coordinated, we have made sure the trail is a part of the development agreement, both with an easement and public access points, both to like center street and to the parcel to the east to continue the same trail that is on that development agreement, which we were also part of that development team. And we generally feel like we're following the general plan that was modified in twenty twenty two, late or early twenty twenty three. And we like the idea that this is a light industrial area because of the airport. It supports a lot of the goals of the city in that area, at least in that reference of the airport. And we I don't entirely remember what the comments were from the neighborhood meeting that was insisting or desiring more flex space, but we kind of consider this flex space project. Some of these buildings are bigger. We, I would love Eric to talk a little bit about why it is the way it is and we we have some hopefully positive reasons why that's the way it is today.
Yeah, so we we are under a non-disclosure agreement, but we do have some some great tenants that that love the city of Provo, that want to be in the city of Provo and and love this location. And before I talk too much about that, I did want to thank the Halliday family. They're all in the back there. They're the sellers of this property and they've been gracious enough to to come tonight and to support us in that respect. But as you can see, if you've if you've visited the property with the the river, the Provo River there and the levy associated with the river, it's a great buffer between this property, the proposed buildings and obviously the delta on the other side and residential. That's, you know, more towards the north. And so with that said, and all these companies that are very excited about this particular location, it will bring great bring in, you know, enhanced employment to Provo City, commerce to Provo City. And it will make the buildings beautiful and they will fit right into you know, a zone around the emerging airport of Provo, which everyone in Utah County is so fond of now. My wife loves the Provo Airport.
Yeah, that is more or less it. We'd love to answer any questions or help create more information.
Thank you. Any questions for either of these gentlemen?
Do we have elevations for the the buildings themselves or just the aerial view?
I think it's in item eight.
The the con, the the elevations were listed are on display, the render, the rendering.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself then.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone turned on. It's building one, building two, building three, but do you anticipate each building will have multiple tenants or is it just like one per building?
So typically a flex building connotates that there's going to be more than one tenant in that building. Of course, as a owner of a building or any building, a single tenant is preferred because you only have one tenant to to manage and and to be, you know, to work with. But yes, if you look at the dotted lines of the buildings, those are, those are lines that show where posts are that hold up the roof and those could technically be demisable. But if you look at a larger building such as building, wait. In the microphone? I'm really quiet, okay. I'm kind of tall, I guess, so they know. So if you look at a light industrial warehouse buildings, the deeper they are, the more likely they're going to have larger tenants. The less deep they are, the more likely that you can have multiple tenants in the building. Because they can demise into square footages that are conducive to smaller, you know, smaller businesses. So for example, on building number one there, if you just demised on that very top dotted line, you'd have a bowling alley, basically. And I know you, I know fat cats is leaving, but we wouldn't want fat, you know, just kidding. Anyway. That that was maybe a bad joke. Sorry, Daniel got it, Daniel got it. Mr. Gonzalez got it, sorry, Miss Kettle got it. Anyway, okay, is that timed up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So.
It's just a door. Someone will get it.
So a very large building, the preference is a single tenant. The smaller the buildings, the more possibility for multiple tenants. Not to say you can't have multiple tenants in the big buildings, but you would probably only want to have two in a in a larger, in a larger building.
Did that answer your question?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for real this time. We'll go ahead and move to the public comment section of the meeting. Just a reminder, you'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please start with your name and city of residence. So we'll invite anyone from the public to come forward now if they would like to make a comment.
Christine Halliday, I am one of the part owners. I just want you to know the where we're coming from and the reason that we are looking to sell is is if you can't tell, we're getting old, we're in our sixties and I don't know if you're aware, but we work two jobs. We don't only run the farm full time, but our husbands have full time jobs on top of that. So they get up in the morning and work a couple of hours before they go to an eight hour job, come home and work five to six more hours to maintain the property that we own in order to pay taxes on it. Our children all have jobs that they that they have now. They don't want to run the farm and it is getting crazier and crazier, especially since Duncan Aviation was put down there. What, if you guys don't understand, our barns are on the opposite side of center street from us, so we have property on both sides of center street. And for us to cross that road multiple times a day, it's very dangerous. And when we have to move cows from one side of center street to the other side of center street, it's also very dangerous and and people have no concept when they see people and cows on the road to slow down and stop. So we are, we just want you guys to understand and know where we're coming from. We're the last people that want to see it go, but it's time. For safety reasons, we're getting old, we're tired, we want to retire, just like all of you would like to retire someday. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thomas Halliday, I live, that's my wife, just came up with thirty four sixty West Center. I sat on the the Public West Side Planning Commission, I believe that's correct, Jonathan. And we determined throughout the west side, what would be the best best use for the property as we went along. And as we come around along to the property there, we could see with the needs of the airport, with the lines of flight patterns and so forth, that this property fit best with the uses that we're trying to move to. So I believe we're trying to do the right thing. I think we're trying to work within the the outlays of what we've decided is best for Provo City and future development. And I think this is the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Last call. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll 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 start just, I think I I was on this when it first came up as residential, I think I was on the rezone too. And I I think one of the overarching things that has always come through is like the access to the riverway. And I'm really appreciative that that you incorporated that into the plan. Slightly disappointed, it's it's losing some residential, but at the same time, I, when when we did the rezone, it was you know, we we did, I remember discussing that it was over the flight path. The and then some of the changes just with the airport, it changed a little bit of the the dynamic and in that part of town. And so I I'm, I'm pretty sure I probably voted a yes to to approve the rezone. So I you know, I'd feel consistent, to be consistent, I'd continue and support approving this item seven and item eight.
I agree. I really appreciate the the public space around it. And I think that also, I always worry about these types of places out way far away that I don't know, from light and things like that. Not that I want lots of light out there, but that they'll be kind of isolated, but it's good that there'll be potentially some people walking around and I always feel like it keeps the places safer.
Any other comments? I'll just comment that, like I said, it was more in my role as neighborhood chair at the time that I was involved with some of this and it was really important to have that river access and have that be not just for the employees, but you know, at open to the public and I'm very glad that you guys have maintained that plan. And so, yeah, I think it's going to be great. I think it's great to bring business to Provo as well. I hope some of the people that work there move to the west side and have short commutes, right, in the end, and it can be really good. I'm also really glad that we have a mechanism to maintain those units through the the bank that Bill's created so that as we try to address some of the issues against the mountains, we can also use what we're giving up here to maintain those units later on and actually create a little more variety of housing units out there. So. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. For item number seven, I move that we recommend approval of the zone map amendment from R one eight one family residential to and residential agricultural zones to the AI airport industrial zone in order to develop a twenty five acre flex industrial campus located approximately at thirty four fifty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood. Yeah, with the the noted as part of this incorporating the staff recommendation that that the applicant guarantees river access and amenities shown in the plan.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Shin.
I.
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 And I will vote I, so item seven passes unanimously. Do we have a motion for item eight?
Are we getting close on time?
We are at time. Now, we already read it in though, so we can go ahead and just go right to the motion on it.
Okay, I'll make a motion on item eight then. I move on item eight, John Jensen requests concept plan approval for twenty five acre flex industrial campus in a proposed airport industrial zone located approximately at thirty four fifty west center street, Fort Utah neighborhood. I move that we recommend that the planning commission approve the proposed concept plan.
Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
You corrected yourself and we're not recommending it, we're actually approving it, right?
Oh, yes, you're right. We are the planning commission. We're approving it, we're not recommending it, yes, thank you.
Good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And we'll start with Mr. Shin.
I.
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 And I'll vote I. Okay, so we are by our rules at time. Um, I don't know how we formally. Do we continue the item? Do we just close the meeting? How do we?
We make a motion that we continue item number nine to the next planning commission meeting in two weeks.
Okay, is that your motion?
I am making that motion indeed.
Do you have? Okay, uh, we'll start with Mr. Shin.
I.
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 And I'll vote I.
And then we make a motion to adjourn. Which I'm also doing.
And everybody together?
I.
Okay.
I didn't want to say this before, um. Earlier, because I didn't want to sound like I was trying to influence your vote, but. Mr. Halliday, Tom Halliday was a longtime member of our board of adjustment.